Good evening. I will call this meeting to order of the Stoughton Select Board. Our meeting is being held on the third floor at Town Hall. And it is October 19th, 7:09 PM. So call the meeting to order, and if you are able, folks in the hall, please stand and join us in saluting our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, with all nation under God, indivisible, free, and justice for all.
Okay, if I could, I just wanted to take a moment. I was away on business last week, and Ms. Roberts, acting as the chair, put everything together tonight. So with your permission, Ms. Roberts, I may call on you to read some of these things through tonight.
Absolutely.
Okay, and thank you for all your hard work, and you made my job a little easier last week. I appreciate it. Thank you so much. And of course, Deb LeBlanc, you know, thank you for what you've done in the past week, working with Deb, and it's a little bit different, and we were able to keep things off the town manager's table. We didn't even have to talk while I was gone.
No.
So that was good. So, okay, with that, is there any citizens' requests in the hall? What's that? Yeah, we're live, though. I will read it, but we are live. In compliance with Governor Baker's declaration of June 16th, 2021, extending certain COVID-19 measures adopted during the state of emergency and extended until April 1st, 2022, this meeting will be conducted both in person and at the Great Hall and virtually via Google Meets for those who wish to participate remotely. Due to potential technical difficulties with virtual meetings, it is requested that anyone wishing to speak attend the meeting in person or send comments to the Select Board in the office by 4:00 PM the day of the meeting. If at any time in the meeting there are audio issues, the virtual portion of the meeting will be closed and the in-person meeting will continue. Okay, so this meeting will be recorded in SMAC cable TV and be broadcast live and may be livestreamed at www.stoughtontv.org. A recording of the meeting, transcript, or other comprehensive record of the proceeding will be posted on the town's website and/or SMAC as soon as possible after the meeting. If live broadcast or streaming is unsuccessful, times approximate and items may be taken out of order at the chairman's discretion. Okay, so I didn't see any citizens' comments in the hall, so I'll start with the Select Board comments. Mr. Gito.
We talk a lot about having citizen participation in the town and the fact that we don't have an awful lot of citizen participation. I just remind people that this is the time of year when you should start thinking about whether or not you're interested in running for any office in the town, whether it's the selectman, the redevelopment authority, the housing authority, or other positions, and for positions on town meeting floor. We have a form of government that allows for citizens to participate in it. If we're not interested in doing it, we need to consider whether or not we want this form of government to continue, because without participation, the government doesn't function well. So I urge you to give that some thought. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gito. Ms. Roberts.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I just have a couple of comments. One is to thank Dr. Grimm and staff for the work they're doing on the Central Street, the sidewalks, the residents are really happy about that. But I do have a question about traffic, your traffic plan. I'm getting some comments about Walnut Street. Do you, I know it's probably in queue along with your plan, but could you please address where we are on that?
Sergeant O'Connor is aware of that, and this does fall under him. He has had a few particularly critical issues. He's also the detective sergeant, and we've had some incidents in town that have required a little more of his time, immediate time, in the past several weeks, one relatively recently and one a few weeks back. So he is aware, he's on it, it's just has unfortunately not been quite at the top of the priority list because of a couple other things he's had to put a little bit ahead of that. But it is on the radar and it is in the queue.
Thank you, Dr. Grimm. And my second question, comment and question is to my fellow board members is regarding the S E O C, Stoughton Equal Opportunity Committee. So we did outreach to all of the five members, and we received responses, they all accepted to be on the committee. So the next steps are for them to meet my fellow board members and for them to share their insight and wisdom. So question, would you like for them to attend an upcoming Select Board meeting, or would you like for me to schedule their first meeting and you meet them at that time? Either or would work.
I think it would be better for us to have them here with us and just have their presentations on, and we can say what we're looking for, you know, in retrospect to the committee, the policy that we worked on and have tweaked, retweet, and tweaked again.
Yes.
So it would be nice, I think, and have it on TV and have it live so people at home can see that as well. And then, you know, you would work there in the future in setting up future meetings and so forth, getting us reports here and there, and, you know, we can even have the committee come forward, whoever's elected chair of that committee that, you know, could make the presentations and so forth, and start that dialogue and keep it moving. My thoughts. Anybody else? Scott?
I agree with you, Mr. Chairman, that they should come forward, they should introduce themselves to the citizens of the town, you know, let them know who they are and all that stuff, and then introduce their, who's the chairman, vice chairman, the secretary, and all that of the board, and so that it shows what's going on, and then go from there.
Okay.
We don't even have our designees till, well, maybe tonight.
Tonight, yeah.
So that's why I think it'd be better if they come that way. People know who we are, but it'd be nice so that they can put a face to the names and, you know, when they bump into them out there, they can say, hey, by the way, you know, and run something by them.
Sure. Steve?
Yeah, I'm in agreement with what you've recommended. You know, first, I had asked myself, you know, what the difference would be if we're meeting, we're meeting, but that's not exactly true, on top of the fact that we have a little bit more visibility. This might be a really good opportunity for people to meet them and become more aware of what's going on. You know, additionally, I think that there's something, though ceremonial, I think there's something important about passing the baton, or passing these, delegating these responsibilities to them at our meeting rather than the other way around. So I think it's all around probably the most appropriate way to go forward.
Okay, thank you. Lou, did you have anything else?
I agree with all of the above.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, and I'll put that plan in motion.
Okay. So with that, I think we're all set, we can go on to, did anybody have anything else? We did have that from Deborah. Anybody else with any kind of selectman's comments at all? I didn't hear anybody. Scott, did you have anything else to add other than this? Anybody? Okay, just want to make sure, I did one last thing. Okay, so with that, we'll move to the town manager's comments.
I actually do have a few. I'll run through quickly. First from Treasurer Paul LaNute, the FY '22 Second Quarter Real Estate and Personal Property Tax Bills were mailed June 30th, they are due November 1st. Both first and second quarter bills were in the same envelope. All unpaid first and second quarter taxes balances will accrue at an interest rate of 14% from the due date, and they may be paid online at stoughton.org. Secondly, Vice Chair Roberts brought up the Central Street work. We also, so Central Street sidewalks by the Hanson are being done, also Central Street above Daddy's Ice Cream, we all know where I must go because that's now my landmark point, are going to be worked on in the upcoming days. And Park and Turnpike has had some overnight work. We had a couple residents ask because it was a little loud overnight. I believe it will be tomorrow night, and then that should be it for the overnight work. So if you get questions, it'll be tomorrow night, maybe one more at the most, but they're trying to do that quickly.
Was that Park and Turnpike or Page and Turnpike?
Oh, Page and Turnpike, I'm sorry. Yeah, Page and Turnpike.
And I did want to ask on that one, there were two sections of that road that were heavily rutted.
Yep.
Both at the intersection of Page and Turnpike and then at the intersection of Hawes Way, which is the entranceway to Target.
Mm-hmm.
Were they gonna do both of those at night, or is this only the one at the intersection?
I think it's only the one at the intersection. I'll check.
Okay. And since we're on Chapter 90 issues, I did mention this to the superintendent so that it wasn't a surprise for him, where the Board of Selectmen, really are the street commissioners and the overseers of Chapter 90, I want to see us have a meeting with the superintendent and his staff, and basically, a lot of work gets done without the Select Board's knowledge. And I think that we should have some, again, oversight of that and some reporting processes. Why are certain streets being done now when we have other ones, if for instance, there's a case like that? And for updates, for instance, we were notified that we had some money coming for the redesign or for the design of the intersection of School and Canton Street. Now, that happened about a year ago, a year and a half ago. We haven't had a word since. So to get updates like that.
Okay.
Because we're all here, and everybody jumps up and says, look at this, we got money for this, and then we don't hear anymore.
Sure.
So I think we, you know, where we are the street commissioners, you know, water and sewer commissioners, I want to start to see some kind of updates.
Sure.
And to have the superintendents come forward.
Sure.
See a lot of work going on down at the waterworks, and you don't know about it until you start seeing it happen. So I'd like to have Tom and everybody come in, just what are you doing, you know, how are we spending our money? And, you know, look at what they have on, and then if, you know, citizens will ask us questions all the time. When will that road, or when can we get traffic enforcement, that type of thing.
Yep.
And it's going to allow us to communicate a little bit better.
And I will also say, we do have the paving list, which is always also available to you and the public. The roads are all rated and ranked.
Right.
So that sometimes explains to the public why one street may have been prioritized over another, and that's so any of those questions can be asked, and the list is available to the board and the public. It's certainly a public document.
Right, but where we are the street commissioners, that's my point, is when that gets rated, I'd like to see us have a vote on that, you know.
Okay, we don't, yeah, so what happens is, the book is the book, it's produced by an outside entity.
Oh, no, I understand that.
That does the rating. But then, as far as what gets done out of that book and what order, sure.
Yeah, it's on an outside agency based on information provided them to, by the DPW.
Yeah, but it has to do with traffic and the size of the roadway, the proportional cost, the use.
Right.
And the degree of damage. So all those get factored, but yeah, the vote on which of those streets then certainly can be a board vote, absolutely.
Yeah, and I guess if we could get, because Canton Street is an issue.
There's, that's being, that's actively, and Mark's here tonight, but that's, that intersection, that's being worked on.
Okay, yeah, just so if we can get, you know.
Yeah, absolutely, that's a critical one.
And I think that if we were to get a report like that, you know, from somebody.
Sure.
Live.
Yep.
And then do maybe bimonthly meetings where we just have somebody come in, give us a 15-minute overview.
Sure.
And if they wanted to, they could log in, if it's something, you know, they could log in from home.
Yeah, if they could pop on for something.
So as long as we have that, because again, it just, it's one more way to, you know, we all talk about transparency, and I think that with Lou's comment earlier about, you know, getting more people involved, I don't know if it's as much as they're not getting involved, but they don't know what's going on, so we're not able to, you know, gain their interest, you know, to want to, you know, be involved. So the more that they see going on, and they see that there's an area, you know, when we talk about articles for conservation land, walking trails, and the preservation of a barn, you know, the more that people know, instead of counting on social media, which is dependable as the weather, you know, we give them some facts and able to engage them, so.
Okay.
Okay, so is there anything else?
Oh, yeah, I got a few tonight.
Okay, good.
Quick, I would like to announce that Pat Basler has submitted her retirement papers. I know it's out there a little bit, but I wanted to officially announce it and thank Pat for her many years of service. I think 24, she said, she's been here.
That's all?
That's all. And that is a town manager appointment, however, historically, and I will continue with that tradition, the library board has been very involved in that process. I also mentioned this to Vice Chair Roberts, and we will work with the new Stoughton team to ensure strong advertising in an effort to recruit a diverse applicant pool. But the Library Board of Trustees will work directly with that team as well as Deanna. They will get the initial resumes in, they typically evaluate Mr. Levinson, I've been in touch with him, and they're eager to work on that with me. So this will be sort of a team effort with the library board. Ultimately, it's my appointment, but I think I'd be remiss if I did not include the people who really have the expertise in that area to have the input. So Pat will be leaving in about three months, that gives us ample time to do a thorough search and transition somebody in. So thank you to Pat. And then a couple other quick ones, just wanted to let you know, Trish Shopshire has applied for a community compact grant to implement Tyler cashiering. This is one of the state grants dedicated to IT or financial systems, and if we were to get that, it would standardize our point-of-sale cash recording system. What this is important for is closing the books. It actually will speed up our whole process of reconciliation and internal controls over any cash that comes in. So just to let you know, we've applied for that grant, and we'll keep you up to date on that.
I have a question on that. Is it a process that's gonna merge into Munis?
I don't know that it necessarily merges, but it will work, it will work in conjunction, they won't be in conflict.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just don't want to see us all the time that we've spent and the money.
No. No, this doesn't, no, this doesn't replace Munis at all.
No, not replacing it, but to make it work so that we don't have to start going out for different software programs when we spent so much money.
No.
And then time, you know, training everybody, you know, that if we have now a new system that confuses, and we don't want to have that.
Yeah, no, this is, this is a good thing.
Okay, great.
This is a good, a good marriage. I just want to let the board know, as you, as you know, last week, I had mentioned that the Train Depot had a walk-through for the public before the Beer Garden. That building will be open at 8:00 on Wednesday, October 27th, the board is invited. This is, that's the day the Little Women tour bus will come. These are the people who tour where the Little Women movie was filmed. They will be coming at 8:00 on October 27th, and the public is also invited to come by as well as the Select Board, so Pam wanted me to pass along the invitation to all of you if you want to pop in and check out the train station and go through the tour with them.
Would you repeat the time?
8:00, I'm the 27th.
Is it AM?
AM, that's an AM, that's an AM one. That's more the hour of the day that I'm awake and alive. Couple other things, a few projects, the Glen Echo bids came back, we had to rebid it, if you recall, because it had taken so long for when it passed town meeting several years ago, that the bids came in and there wasn't enough money. We put it back on town meeting, we went back out to bid. There were three lower bids, and we have one that is a very, very good option, and we will be going with that. I think November, work will be, we should start seeing work on Glen Echo from that bid in November. So I know that's a big one, people wanted a project update on. Many of you heard that we received street hockey boards through a grant from Senator Timulty. Matt Koshon has gone to CPC to get funding to make a true outdoor sports complex at Halloran, which will improve our basketball courts and the street hockey boards. Our DPW will be assisting, excuse me, engineering will be assisting in doing all the basic engineering work that needs to be done for that project. So that'll be a team effort. We'll have a lot of it done within Stoughton, and then CPC is showing initial support for that project as well. So we're very excited about that. A little good money stuff, the golf course for the month of September came in at $61,193 for the month. That is $2,500 higher than last September. October is trending very well despite the rain that we've had. It appears that by the end of October, we will have reached our goals from two years ago even. And that, and their, their year ends in October, November, and then, so that means pretty much all of next year is going to be profit. We're very hopeful there will be no more operating subsidy for the golf course next year. I think we're at the point where it will be self-sufficient. Partially, we have, we have the concessionaire, they're doing very well. Mr. McCrisky was involved with that group coming in, they pay rent, which had been a big bone of contention, understandably, that had been an issue before. They're drawing in good crowds, the golfing is going well, the course looks great, Victor's doing a tremendous job, so it's a little bit of good news to pass along there. Some other good news on the money front, Sue Herman got the restaurant and hotel receipts. We've been kind of holding our breath. If you recall, we budgeted ultra-conservatively, we budgeted 75% of a very low number because we looked at COVID numbers, and we budgeted even 75% of that. It actually, from a year ago this time, our restaurants were at $95,003. This year, we are at $147,915. So we're $50,000 higher than a year ago to date. And the hotels, which were the ones we were very concerned about, were at $58,000 last year, they're at $81,000 this year. So things are coming back and looking good, and I know I'm tying us up here, but it was all good stuff. And then, Mr. Fitzgerald, Dick Fitzgerald, wanted me to pass along, we are having the Veterans Day Parade, and after that, immediately upon completion of the Veterans Day Parade, there's a ceremonial opening of the high school field. It is going to be dedicated as the Veterans Memorial Field, and that dedication will occur right after the Veterans Day Parade at 232 Pearl Street, and there will be email invites passed along to the board, but he also asked that I mention it tonight to the board and to the public. And that will again be on Veterans Day, right after the parade. So that is, I think that's, I think that's my list. That's it for me.
Quick question on Glen Echo. What's the status of the gate?
Okay, so, yeah, there is a gate there, there's been a gate there.
Has it been being secured?
I believe so, no, it's not the electronic gate, and I, Mark may know more about the gate at Glen Echo. There is a gate there that DPW has in.
They have a gate?
Yes.
But is it a gate that closes so people cannot go in there after hours?
Yeah.
It's a locked door.
Okay, my question is still, though, has it been being locked? Because there's been talk of, you know, from the residents in that area, that people have been going down there late at night.
It's supposed to be locked, as far as we know it is, as far as DPW knows it's been locked.
Okay, because I did notice something on Facebook that I read.
Yes.
That there were cars going down there.
Yep.
At all times of the night, so I'm going to argue that maybe that's not happening. So if we could, you know.
If it's on the computer, it must be true.
It's right, if it's on Facebook, that's it, it's the law.
Yeah, we'll follow up to ensure it's being locked nightly, but the gate is there. It isn't, like, I was just concerned that the gate had been somehow removed. It has not.
Right, but, you know, I didn't think it was that, I thought it was just something that maybe somebody's been forgetting to go down and lock it at the end of the day.
Yeah, we'll just follow up.
And it should be a very simple process of somebody going down in the morning, opening it, and somebody before they leave going down and locking it.
Yeah, and it may have to be that we ask the police department to, because the hour you would lock it would be well after the DPW is done for the day.
Yeah.
So likely, you know, we don't want to lock it at 4:00 in the afternoon, at 4:30 in the afternoon.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't know, and it's hard to, you know, if there's a department that's supposed to do it, a private citizen Glen Echo committee, I, so let me, let me hunt out.
Okay.
But I did confirm with DPW, the gate is in place.
Okay.
I have a question in that regard. So once the gate is locked, is there a sign that tell, that says who to contact if your car is locked on Glen Echo premises after that gate is closed?
That's a good question. I don't know, I, yeah, it's confiscated, it becomes property of the town.
Possession is nine tenths of the law, right?
Well, and that's going to become an even bigger issue because I think we're in the process of getting electronic gate, a computer electronic gate for that, so it's not even going to be as simple as call somebody who has a key. So, yeah, let's find out what we've got for signage.
I think some signage when they're driving in.
I think there is, there's ours, but.
Yeah, exactly, just say strictly enforced.
Yeah.
You know, because I, you know, with the amount of calls the police department gets now, I don't think it's a very good use of their time to send them down locking and unlocking a gate, you know? And if we have somebody on duty that's on call for the DPW, which we usually do, to act, and they're being paid for it anyway, you know, we can have that person go down and lock or unlock that gate, so.
I, a follow-up on the Munis because Sue Herman is ever-present. Hi, Sue. Sue wanted me to say, it's actually a module of Munis. I didn't realize, I thought it was actually a separate module, but it is not.
Awesome.
It is a module of Munis.
Great, beautiful, that's what, that's even better than what you said.
There you go. Thank you, Sue.
Thank you, Sue.
The omnipotent.
Exactly, she doesn't let us get away with anything, huh?
Sue's watching, Sue's always watching from somewhere.
That's a good thing. That's dedication to your job, I love it.
Yeah, she says hi.
Okay, so.
That's it for me.
All right, so then, and I didn't have the opportunity, I apologize to the vice chair on the next one for 7:20 on the Redevelopment Authority, application of Stanley Zoll vote may be taken. I don't know why that's on here, because he did apply within the correct timeframe, and we'll be, you know, at one point acting on them, so I don't know why it was here tonight. Is there any specific reason?
Oh, you're going to respond to that?
Yes, there had been some confusion. Initially, I believe we had spoken with Mr. Zemanian, and we were under the impression that it had to get on for tonight, they're having quorum issues because of a number of people. What we did not realize was the way the advertisement was, people can apply either to the SRA or to this office.
Right.
We had only Mr. Zoll's application. What we did not realize were that there were three other applications that had gone to the SRA.
Okay.
In time, and so it would not have been fair to only interview Mr. Zoll and not include those other three.
Oh, without a doubt.
And on the other hand, there was no point in interviewing just Mr. Zoll if the other three weren't also going to be interviewed, or have to have him come back twice.
Right.
So it'll be on for November 2nd.
Right, there's no need for it to be on here, so.
No.
All right, okay. Scott?
I was going to speak on that. Usually, when I first got on the board years ago, we had to make an appointment to it, and we met with the authority.
Yes.
And they sat with us.
They're going to be doing that.
And they brought in, so that's why I was like.
It's a joint, it's supposed to be a joint appointment, yes.
And the thing that we have available in this one, Scott, that's different, is that we've had the governor's appointment to that board as well.
Yeah, but this isn't, this isn't different, this is.
No, it's not, it's the same, because in, in the law as well, there's, there is a part where it makes a comment that says that if the state fails to appoint a replacement within 120 days, that the Select Board has the authority to do that. So that's why, you know, we wanted to make sure that they were all in the same way and no confusion. But I was made aware that a person did apply to the governor's office, and the application has been received by them, so we'll let that one go through the process. And, but now the governor's office is aware, and I think, I don't know what happened, but that position was vacant basically since January of this year, and they hadn't acted on it. So that was, you know, the, why it was handled through the SRA and us, you know, so.
And while the, apparently state law says that the Select Board is the appointing authority for that other position, the Select Board position, our charter has it as a joint appointment, which is what you recall.
Right.
With the SRA and us. So that was the other problem, the SRA hadn't, didn't know we were putting it on to notify in time to set up their own meeting.
Right, right, and there was a little, you know, back and forth, that things got confused, but we're doing it just the way we've always done it.
Yeah.
It'd be a joint appointment.
I was looking at it.
November 2nd.
And I was like, we're appointing, and then I was looking at which one we're appointing because I remember we did 120-day one, too.
Right.
And I'm like, this one isn't, I'm like, uh-oh, this, this should be figured out.
No, it was just, though, I think we could have coordinated the advertisement a little better, you know, but it was, it was still covered, both of it, you know, applied to you know, but it was, it was still covered, both of it, you know, applied to them or to us. As a matter of fact, I was told after that Mr. Zoll actually applied to both.
I believe he did apply to both, and Ms. LeBlanc did reach Mr. Zoll to let him know about tonight, and he understood.
Great. All right, then, so with that, we'll move on to item six for request from the town treasurer to authorize issuance of $2,102,690 in bond anticipation notes pursuant to General Law Chapter 44, Section 4. Ms. Newt, good evening.
Good evening.
And the floor is yours, ma'am.
And green means that it's on, right?
Green is on.
Okay. It was on, it was on all along.
Use your playground voice.
My playground voice. Okay. So the ban that you have in front of you, which is the bond anticipation note, is the same amount that was voted on and signed at your June 24, 2021, meeting. I know that some of you weren't here at the time, but most of you were, and that amount was at 2.2 million, 102,690. This is a renewal of that same ban, and the only difference is that the ban that we had back in June was a four-month ban, this is actually a six-month ban, and the rate did go down. The rate was at 2%, it is now at 1.5%. We did receive a premium back in June of 11 million, I mean, I'm sorry, $11,250, and this particular issuance, we're going to be receiving almost $10,000 in a premium. So that's about the difference. The reason why we did do it this way is because we're hoping that the fire department is going to get their building, and that is going to be approved at the special town meeting, and then at the ballot, so that we can go forward with a long-term borrowing at that point. If we did long-term borrowing for the 2.1 million, it would have cost us about $35,000 to $40,000, where this cost us $13,000 to renew the ban.
Questions of the board? Scott? Steve?
No, I have no questions, thank you very much.
Deborah?
I have no questions.
Mr. Gito?
None.
Okay. Ms. Roberts, would you like to do the pleasure of reading this into the record for the vote? That's a delegation right there. I've had people tell me when I read, I read too quickly sometimes, so.
Let's see if I can do that. I, the clerk of the select board of the town of Stoughton, Massachusetts, certify that at a meeting of the board held October 19, 2021, of which meeting all members of the board were duly notified and in which a quorum was present, the following votes were unanimously passed, all of which appear upon the official record of the board and my custody. Voted to approve the sale of $2,102,690 at one-point, 5% general obligation bond anticipation note of the town dated October 28, 2021, and payable April 14, 2022, at the Oppenheimer and Company Incorporated at par in accrue interest plus a minimum of $9,958. Further voted that in connection with the marketing and sale of the notes, the preparation and distribution of the notice of the sale of preliminary official statement dated October 7, 2021, and the final official statement dated October 14, 2021, each such form as may be approved by the town treasurer be and hereby are ratified, confirmed, and approved and adopted. Further noted that the town treasurer and the select board be and hereby are authorized to execute and deliver a significant events disclosure undertaking in compliance with section rule 15(c)(2) through 12, in such form as may be approved by the bond council to the town, which undertaking shall be incorporated by reference in the notes for the benefit of the holders of notes from time to time. Further voted that we authorize and direct the town treasurer to establish post-issuance federal tax compliance procedures and continuing disclosure procedures in such form as the town treasurer and bond council deem sufficient, or if such procedures are currently in place, to review and update said procedures in order to monitor and maintain the tax-exempt status of the notes and to comply with relevant security laws. Further voted that any certificates or documents relating to the notes may be executed in several counterparts, each of which shall be regarded as an original and all of which shall constitute one and the same document. Delivery of an executive counterpart of a signature page to a document by electronic mail in a PDF file or by electronic transmission shall be effective as delivery of a manually-executed counterpart signature page to such document, and electronic signatures on any of the documents shall be deemed original signatures for the purposes of the documents and shall, and all matters relating thereto having the same legal effect as original signatures. Further voted that each member of the select board, the town clerk, and the town treasurer be and hereby are authorized to take any and all such actions, and execute and deliver such certificates, receipts, and other documents as may be determined by them or any of them to be necessary or convenient to carry into effect the provisions of the foregoing votes. I further certify that the votes were taken at a meeting open to the public, that no votes were taken by secret ballot, that a notice stating the place, date, time, and agenda for the meeting, which agenda included the adoption of the above votes, were filed with the town clerk and a copy thereof posted in a manner conspicuously visible to the public at all hours in and on the municipal building that the office of the town clerk is located or is applicable in accordance with an alternative method of notice prescribed or approved by the attorney general as set forth in 940 CMR 29.32, to be at least 48 hours, not including Saturdays, Sundays, and legal holidays prior to the time of the meeting, and remain so posted at the time of the meeting, that no deliberations or decisions in connections with the sale of the notes were taken in executive session, all in accordance with General Law Chapter 30a, Section 18 through 25 as amended, dated October 19, 2021.
Okay, and on that vote, I'll do my roll call. Mr. Carrara?
Yes.
Mr. Kaby?
Yes.
Ms. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Gito?
Yes.
And the chair votes in favor. Is that it?
Thank you very much.
Thank you, good to see you.
Yes, you too, have a nice night.
You too.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming in. Okay, and 7/35, street acceptance, Bergeron Way, Forest Green subdivision, votes may be taken. Mr. Tisdale, Director of Development Services. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Can you hear me? All right. Good evening, everybody, Mark Tisdale, Director of Development Services. I'm here tonight for the first step in the street acceptance process for Bergeron Way. The project was actually under construction when I first started working here about 10 years ago, so that's how long it's been going on. Essentially, like, with every subdivision, it takes a period of time to complete everything, and the town has a policy where it waits three years, three winters after the final paving, to make sure there's no issues with the pavement before we accept the road. It's met all that criteria, the applicants, not the applicants, but the stakeholders, the people who live down there, they actually pushed this forward, they wanted to get it accepted. But unfortunately, the developer had some final punchless items for a few years, it took a while to get addressed. The final punchless item was some crack sealing that had to occur. So DPW went out there, inspected it, our engineers went out there, inspected it, everything's good. So we are starting the first step in the street acceptance process, which is the select board needs to vote their intention to lay out the way, then recommend it to the planning board. The planning board has 45 days to take it up, review it, they come up with a recommendation, and then I believe it comes back to your select board to lay out the way, and then town meeting occurs after that.
Questions of the board, Mr. Gito?
No questions.
Ms. Roberts?
Yes, I do have questions. Can you, a public way, so this is over by South School, right? Public way-
Yes, exactly, it's off Ash Street.
Off Ash Street, right? Is a public way where you drive or you walk, is it open space? I didn't understand what that was.
Yep, so, so you have a right of ways, right? A right of ways, it can be a private way, or a public way, or a county way, so it's three, or a paper street. I mean, we can get really technical with this, but essentially, you got a public way is one version of a right of way. So when this road is accepted, it would become a public way, and it will receive all the benefits that towns give public ways, like the maintenance of the way, you get trash pickup, things of that nature. So at this point, it's a, it's actually a private way. So if there's a pothole that occurs, or there's some kind of issue with the road, the people who live on the road and the developer who owns the road is responsible to fix the road. Every subdivision that gets approved through the planning board starts out as a private way, with the intention to become a public way. Sometimes they never make it that far because they don't complete the road properly, or they just, sometimes the developer just runs away in different situations.
Thank you very much, that's very helpful, because I did see a lot of residential development in that area, and so those new homes, they're pretty nice-looking, maybe 700,000 or so, so they're looking for the town to, to help with, you know, road repairs or whatever happens, because it was a dirt road in the beginning, right? That is the private way.
Yep, so it was originally a wooded piece of land-
Witted piece of land.
-and then they, they built the road to town specifications with the intent for it to become a public way, and now they're going through that process.
Thank you very much.
Yep.
Mr. Kaby?
Just because it's a public way also, they're, or it's not currently a public way, they're also responsible for plowing, correct?
Correct, exactly.
I appreciate that. Okay, that's the only question I had, thank you.
Scott?
Is there any, is there any bond money being held on this road right now?
Not, not to the best of my knowledge, no.
So if there was a problem, who's on the hook?
If there was a, if there was a bond, well, since the road-
No, 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 I said, I asked you if there was a bond, you said, "Not to my knowledge", which means it's all been returned. So now we're going to accept the street, and if something's wrong with it, there's no money being held, so who's on the hook? Are the homeowners going to split it evenly, or is the town going to fix it so that we can accept it?
Well, the way it typically works is when, when the final punchless items are complete, and it's ready to be accepted, there's no bond that's required. So up until town meeting, if a pothole occurs, that, that association is responsible to fix that pothole. Once the town takes it, we're responsible for it, but that, once it becomes a public way, you always release the bond at that point, if there is one.
Well, what I'm, what I'm getting at is, I don't think we should be releasing all the money until the street is accepted, and if it doesn't get accepted for 10 years, then too bad.
Oh, I completely agree with you.
You know what I mean?
Yeah.
This is what I, this is what I'm trying to lead into, so they understand what I'm, what I'm saying. I, and you know, and I, we both know, but right now, this could be a real problem, if all of a sudden, because we have no letter from the planning board, usually we get a letter saying that it's all been done. This is a little different, that it goes to here to say we want it, then it goes back to planning board. We used to just get a letter from engineering department saying everything's been looked at, we get a letter from public works saying the man drilled everything to make sure that that's all working, and then the planning board votes on it, sends us that, yep, everything met. I've never seen it go back forth and, and what, it's usually an all-at-once thing that they met and said, were these criterias met?
Right.
And, and that way.
But I think you, I mean, you make a good point, you've been, you've been around it for a while, so you know the processes that were in place for a while, but I'm going by the street acceptance manual that was accepted in 2000, and then it says the first step is the board of selectmen is, has their intention to lay out the way, then it goes to the planning board, and like the stuff you're talking about, a lot of the technical things would come up at that point. If the planning board has a positive recommendation, then it comes back to the board of selectmen at that meeting, and then you vote your official intention to lay out the way, and then it goes to town meeting. If anything happens between town meeting and all those votes, like a pothole happens, a water line busts, something like that, if there is a bond, we pull it, we use it to fix it. After the vote happens at town meeting to accept the way, that's when the bond would get released, because now it's our road.
But there is no money being held, this is, this is what I'm, this is what I'm trying to, I'm worried about, is, you know what I mean?
So my recommendation would be-
Before you came, we had rocky, no, it was a mess, falling apart everywhere. They actually, in order, those people wanted that road to be accepted so bad, because it was, the more it was staying there, it was falling apart. They all had a pony up $660 apiece, those poor homeowners, and to get certain things fixed, so it could be accepted, they had to pave like the radiuses on some places where it was a little thin, it wasn't watched, and so this, I mean, to have a road that's been cracked sealed, I mean, it's already 10 years into falling apart. So now we're going to take it over, and probably less than eight years down the line, there could be another problem where we're going to be looking at paving it or something. It might not make the top list, but it'll be run down like some of the other side streets are. I just think we got to look at hanging on to some coin in the end. I mean, it's, if it takes that long for the, somebody to get up and going on it, then-
The good news about this is what we would be doing, is there's a winter season coming, which is in our favor. So the winter season goes, and there's more cracks or other things form, we're not bound to this. We can withdraw the article at town meeting, we do not have to accept a road that's falling apart after another winter. So we make a point at the engineering department, to go out there after every winter for any road in this type of situation, and do another inspection. And I would never go to town meeting and recommend to town meeting to accept a road that's falling apart and not in good condition.
So that, that's, I had, it tagged why we didn't have letters, and now, so we'll see what happens when I get here.
Okay. Steve?
I have no questions.
No. Deborah?
No additional questions, Mr. Chairman.
And Mr. Gito?
I think the first paragraph says that we have to start this process before December 31 in order to get the road accepted at the annual town meeting. It seems to me that, that we ought to do that, and it also seems to me that we have a very good engineering department that would look at the state of the road before town meeting. I mean, I've dealt with this for a few years.
Doesn't seem like it's a big problem, I would move ahead with this.
So with that being said, I want to entertain a motion for the acceptance of Bergeron Way Forest Green subdivision. So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made by Mr. Gito for the motion to accept Bergeron Way at Forest Green subdivision, and that is seconded by Ms. Roberts. And I am repeating these votes because we have, at times, a problem for Dolores hearing who made the motion and who seconded the motion, so Dolores, if you're out there, I haven't forgotten you, so.
It's to initiate the-
The acceptance, yes.
I think it's-
Okay, to initiate the acceptance.
You want your intention to lay out the way.
All right.
You could use the term preparation to accept.
Okay, so what do we want to make that as? The, to initiate the process for acceptance of Bergeron Way?
Your intention to lay out the way.
All right, so I say, the motion will be our intention to lay out the public way of Bergeron Way at Forest Green subdivision. Mr. Gito, will you take that as an amendment to your motion?
Yes.
Okay, so again, that motion was made by Mr. Gito, seconded by Ms. Roberts, and on the vote, Mr. Gito? Ms. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Kaby?
Yes.
Mr. Carrara?
Yes.
The chair votes in favor. Thank you very much, and then we'll move on to stormwater regulations presentation, again, for Mark Tisdale.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Mark Tisdale, Director of Development Services. With me is Scott Turner.
Excuse me, it-
He's just opening up-
Before we get into the stormwater- Before we get into the stormwater, I want to ask the town engineer one question.
Okay.
Mark, on the Avon quarter-mile, as I know it, they're extending the sidewalks down so they could get to that water. I asked the gentleman who came that if that was direct discharge for those two new-
Yes.
Are they?
They're not changing any point source discharges out there at all. They're staying, they're just moving catch basins in the street, but they're tying into the same pipe.
Yeah, I couldn't make heads or tails out of the paint because it said new pipe, and I was like-
No, Robin asked me that.
I thought I had forwarded, I apologize. I thought I had forwarded that to you.
It's a good question, though. Because if it was, you had to go through conservation and all those kind of things.
It's illegal.
Exactly.
Okay.
Mark Tisdale, Director of Development Services. With me tonight is Scott Turner from Environmental Partners Group. He's our consultant that we use for stormwater-related matters. He's also a resident in Stoughton, too, and has lived there for 20-something years.
23 years, yep.
23 years. So we're lucky to have a consultant that lives in Stoughton.
How's the stormwater on his street, though?
Works just fine.
If you can drink, drink from it.
Right, right, exactly. That should be the driest street that we have.
Right, right. So tonight, it's just a follow-up to what we dealt with at town meeting, the last annual town meeting, where we had a stormwater bylaw approved at town meeting. Part of the condition of getting the bylaw approved is to get a set of regulations you can enforce the bylaw with, and that is done through your board, through the select board, as the drain and street commissioners in town. The EPA's MS4 stormwater permit mandates this. It's not something we're optionally doing. It's something that's required. Everything in the set of regulations is mandated. We worked with environmental partners, but we also have a good relationship with the Napa River Watershed Association, so they kind of go through it and look at it also. So we kind of combined everybody's thoughts, came up with this document. And just to kind of clarify, stormwater, we do a lot of what's in this document already, the inspections, the reviews, the plan, the middles, all the stormwater designs are required by the DEP Stormwater Management Manual, which is a different document than this. There's a lot of overlap in these federal and state documents. So there's not, it's not like something new that we don't already do. We do 90% of this already. And Scott will get a little bit into a little more detail on that. I guess we should just start the presentation, if that's okay?
Okay. Thanks, Mark.
Yep.
First slide. So as Mark said, this permit has been in effect for quite some time. The first iteration of it was in 2003, was effective through 2008, and then it more recently was updated in 2016, became effective in 2018, so you are now in year four of the permit. Every year, we're in year four, and every year, there are different requirements. And unlike the previous permit, there are audits that are being performed by EPA. I've sat through one of them, and so they are, sure.
How many slides?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
How many slides?
12. 12. I'll go quick.
This is, this is an extreme. Not if you've got paper in front of you, Lou.
Go to slideshow on the top bar.
Well, you know, yeah. It still is a challenge on the eyes here. I think, I'm older than you, I think.
Do you want to email it?
Yeah. And I, I agree with that. I think, you know, just my thought is when we have these, you know, it's good because people at home are going to be able to see it, but from here still is challenging, even for me. If we could get, in the future, Robin, if we could, and Deborah, if we could at least have these printed, if there's going to be one up so that we can follow along right here, some of us, no, no, it's okay. I mean, for now, I, you know, I know the information a little bit, like Deborah's got one here that I could follow along with as well, and just bring it up on the computer. But I think it's easier, you know, and that we have something in print as well.
Sure.
No worries.
Any questions?
Okay, next slide. So there are really six, six areas for the permit, six what they call minimum control measures that we have to meet. We are generally talking today about minimum control measure five, which is new development and redevelopment, MCM four, which is construction site stormwater runoff, and MCM six, which is good housekeeping. Next slide.
Next slide.
This just talks about some of the requirements of each of the minimum control measures. Probably the most significant of the three that are up there is the illicit discharge detection and elimination, and basically what they want you to do is disconnect, is find and disconnect all illegal discharges to your stormwater system. In cases where there are sewer systems connected, they want you to find those and disconnect them. Next slide. But these slides here, new development and redevelopment and good housekeeping, that's really the meat of the regulations. They require things like managing stormwater in a new, in a different way than traditionally it has been managed using things called low-impact development. They have some additional performance standards that exceed the state stormwater management standards and require local regulations and practices for incorporating low-impact development and green infrastructure. Next slide. This is just a requirement, this slide here talks about passing a bylaw within three years of the permit effective date, which the town did last, last spring. Next slide. And then these next few slides talk about, well, the top bullet there talks about passing an ordinance or regulatory mechanism that requires the use of sediment and erosion controls, which is listed in this, in the regulations in front of you. And then it also talks about different items regarding site development in MCM five for new development and redevelopment, such as low-impact development, site planning, and again, some additional requirements for the, that exceed the state stormwater management handbook. Next slide. The proposed changes includes, well, the changes were passed during the stormwater management bylaw. As Mark had described, you are the stormwater authority, and Mark and his office are really the agent for this, for these regulations and bylaw. Next slide. And so this is just a list of the, of all of the changes that are in the regulations. It creates what's called a stormwater permit, which is basically administered by Mark's office, but the select board is the administrative authority. It includes some additional details on issuing the stormwater permit. The regulations include a new application, it includes fees, application fees, requires, it provides thresholds for permit amendments, and then it requires as-built plans to be provided within two years of completion of construction. Next slide. Has some technical information regarding the sizing and the design and construction of stormwater management facilities, and it includes things like more specific inspection criteria and operation and management details. Next slide. This slide here talks about the process for an applicant to apply for a stormwater permit, which they would do concurrently with a regular site plan approval or definitive subdivision, or in some cases, a notice of intent with the Conservation Commission. And I don't think we need to go through everything, every single step here, but it is similar to all of the steps that you typically, you typically follow when you apply for any other land development permit. Next slide. And that's it. I know I went very quick. I also understand that this is not necessarily your area of expertise, but the things to really understand is that, as Mark said, these are required under state law and also federal law. And this is, these kinds of discussions are things that I'm doing at a lot of different towns. We have roughly 25 municipalities that we're doing MS4 work in, and it's just something that is required. With that, I'll take any questions.
Okay, questions, Mr. Gito.
Do we have any idea what it will cost the town to implement these regulations?
It should not cost the town anything additional to implement these regulations.
Nothing.
There are other requirements of the MS4 permit that do cost the town considerable amounts of money, and Mark and I, we coordinate pretty regularly about the investment in this permit requirements, but these, these requirements are just different than the regulations and the requirements that Mark already enforces.
My question was to the latter issue that you were talking about, not to adopting the regulations, but implementing the regulations.
Implementing these regulations will not cost the town any money.
They won't.
Not these regulations.
Okay.
Do not get them confused with the MS4 permit. The MS4 permit with the, that-
Thank you.
Okay.
Deborah?
You answered my question regarding, it's a regulation, which means all of the surrounding towns and states are required to adhere to this. So, thank you very much.
Steve?
I have no questions. Thank you very much for the presentation.
Scott?
Well, I'm always the what-if guy. In here, we have the application that shows, do we have the fine application-type thing?
There's a section on here, the fines.
I know there's a section, but I was wondering if there could be, how the application is, could there be like a fine boilerplate so that it's one thing if one of us tell you or somebody tells you there's a violation, it'd be nice if there was a form like, like the application form where it says erosion control fail, you know, basin's not working properly, you know, that type of stuff, and you could do it checked off. That way, you got a record of it, it's more real. You know what I mean?
So on page, starting on page 18 is the section on enforcement.
Right.
And then if you go to page 19, under the same section, section 12E, talks about fines that can be enforced for violations of these bylaws. It starts with $100 fine, and the second violation and subsequent are $300 per day.
You're looking for a specific form, right? This is what I'm looking for, a fine form, something like that. So that it, you know what I mean? You've got an application form.
You're looking for a standard form, right?
There should be a fine form in the drawer so that you can pull it out and go, hey, this violation occurred, it goes in the folder. So it's not, oh, did we, when did we start the fine, when did it occur?
We could definitely do a form. What I usually do, Scott, is I usually just write a letter, and then I do a follow-up letter.
I'd rather have a form, since we're the guys in charge of it. I'd rather have a form. That way, it's in her office and your office. So not to say anything, it's just we're involved in it.
Yeah, no, that's, that's an easy change. We can add a form.
You know what I mean?
Yep.
That's all, Joe.
So Mr. Carrara, the clarification is it's a form in addition to the letter that Mr. Tisdale was referring to.
Well, the form will be what occurred. That's going to be a violation form. His letter is going to be a notification with a copy of the violation form that goes out. It won't be just a letter that somebody goes, "So we spilt a little dirt and it's washing down into the neighbor's yard and it flooded them out. We'll clean it up later." No, when they get the violation form attached to it, it's going to be the real deal. 300, 100 every day to the maximum of, you know what I mean? That's the way it has to be done.
Thank you very much for the clarification.
Okay, and what vote are you looking for, Mark?
I guess if you could approve the regulations with the condition that we have a form that meets Scott's requirements.
Okay. Scott, would you like to make the motion?
I make the motion that we accept item eight, stormwater regulation presentation with all its content and under the violation, that a violation ticket or incident ticket be drawn up and added in so that when a violation occurs, it can be addressed and sent with the letter that the town engineer sends out. It just shows a little more teeth.
Second.
Okay, motion made by Scott on the approval of the stormwater regulation presentation, seconded by Ms. Roberts. Any other further discussions? Mr. Gito?
No, correct.
Ms. Roberts, anything further?
No, thank you.
Steve, Scott. Okay, so on the motion, Mr. Gito.
Yes.
Ms. Roberts.
Yes.
Mr. Kaybee.
Yes.
Mr. Carrara.
Yes.
And the chair votes in favor. Thank you very much.
It would be the stormwater management local code.
Right. Okay.
Thanks, Mark.
Okay, now, on this section, Ms. Roberts, I'm going to hand off to you on the veterans' agent candidate interviews. So if you don't mind, you can lead us through this process.
Thank you very much.
Your mic, your mic's not on.
So before we start, I just wanted to refresh the select board's memory. We're recruiting for the Director of Veterans Services, and when we went through the process, we had developed a list of traits that we were looking for. So I worked very closely with Mr. Kaybee on this, and we came up with a list of 14. One was communication style, relevant experience, strategic process to grow the program, management style, that's people management, priorities, coachability, ramp-up time needed to add value to the role, technical skills, financial accounting skills, fiduciary experience, contract knowledge, advocacy experience, working knowledge of Title 38, which are the veterans' benefits, and then other relevant skills that you personally believe would be helpful in this position. So we had the, looked at all of the applicants, and we have it narrowed down to just a few, a very short list. So the first is Mr.?
Butrica.
Butrica. Yeah, see, I have a habit of butchering a name.
It's all right.
So please tell us a little bit about yourself and tie it in to that list that I just described, and anything else you think would be helpful. After you do that, we will have a roundtable questions to ask you, and then it should be painless because you have very, very solid and very good credentials.
Thank you.
And we're very impressed with them.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Well, there's a lot of, a lot of things on that list, but I'm an Air Force veteran first, mostly because it's the first thing I did after high school.
Well, thank you for your service.
Thank, thank you. Unfortunately, I was hurt. I'm a 100% disabled veteran because of this. I'm a 100% disabled veteran because of this. As soon as I left, I went to school like a lot of people do, use the GI Bill. I am degree computer science. So that might, that folds into the technical side. I'm meticulous with everything I do in that, in that sense. And you have to be a good planner and you have to be on regulations and ethics is a big part of that, too. So that's, that's it. But while I was in school and till very recently, I've worked with veterans every day. From most of my school time was more big VA, federal laws and regulations and state laws and regulations, helping these students and non-students apply for benefits, know the laws and know who needs what and when they need it and then never losing these veterans. Later on, I worked for the, for the Town VSO for Easton. That's where I, I was trained, Chapter 115 and everything else that goes along with that. But I, I think while I was doing that, I found myself really, really falling in love with the work of helping out veterans in that, in that case, more so than the computer science stuff. I found what I was supposed to do and then I got really good at it, I think. One thing you have to have for this position, I believe, is compassion and empathy and the ability to, the, the ability to be there for someone and then keep tabs on them. You don't want to lose track of some of these veterans. And the town level, you have to also deal with their, their spouses, most of its spouses. And you have to fold in the first thing, the meticulousness into this because you also don't want to cost the town any money. If you do the right paperwork and you keep track, you'll get that 75% reimbursement, which is what you're looking for, I believe. I don't know if I answered.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Okay, Mr. Gito, any questions?
I come into your office, ask you about a grave marker.
A grave, I'm sorry, a what? Okay.
In the process, I keep asking you what, what?
Yeah.
So what do you do?
I go at your pace. I break it down in a way that's easily digestible. I do most of the work for you in this situation because you're looking for a grave marker. There's, you said you're looking for a grave marker, right? So there's obviously a situation that's, that's a high emotional-
Excuse me one second, I apologize. Mr. Gito, your mic is not on?
Oh. I'm sorry.
Could you hear me?
Oh, I, I'm on.
Let me, let me start again.
It's all right.
I come into your office and I ask you about a grave marker. And in the process, I keep asking you, what did you say?
I would just repeat or, you know, I would, I would provide information and help in a way that you would understand. And by the end of the, you know, conversation of the time, we would have that grave marker prepare or on it, on its way. But I would, I would never get frustrated and I would, I would maneuver the conversation in a way maybe that was more understandable or maybe even-
Would you ask me any other questions or would you give me another advice?
I would give advice on-
What about my hearing?
Oh, oh, I see, yeah, yes. I would provide more information about hearing aids and the VA programs. Sorry, I was, I didn't know if you were asking, you were confused by the information I was providing or if it was a hearing. Sorry about that.
Mr. Kaybee.
Sure. Once again, thank you for your service and also thank you for applying for this position. It's a department head position. It's, and so for that reason, I, I, the question I have is very much directed towards the management of, of a department. And I, I would like to better understand, in this case, there's really no right or wrong answer, but I really do want to understand your idea of, of, your understanding of your own management style and how that would benefit this department in this town.
Well, it would be top-down, obviously. I would provide clear, clear instruction and provide all the resources necessary for whatever job needs to be complete. Again, I'm, I'm someone that needs to be not, I wouldn't micromanage in that sense, but I would need to know what's going on to make sure that issues don't expand on us. Sometimes, sometimes something can come to your office, an explosive person, maybe anger, and you have to be there to de-escalate and, you know, essentially find what the actual issue is and be there. But as a management style, I need, I would be very aware of what's, what's going on and be hands-on.
Thank you. Scott.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Sean, for showing up and thank you for your service to the country. Stoughton likes their parades. They like to support their, their veterans. They like to see them. Have you ever run parades? Do you, do you have any-
I have experience. I, I didn't, I wasn't the VSO for this, but I, I worked with him, assisted in, on all things and in other levels too, not for town, but, and I'm very aware of the parades and the Memorial Days and sometime, you know, coffee hour at the VFW and keeping those connections because they are some of our best resources, especially for the parade and again, other things that come up. Memorial Day are just issues with memorial sites, you know, around town. I'm very aware and knowledgeable in that sense, but definitely pro-parade, you know. I think it's really good for a town to continue those traditions, you know.
With, with the loss of the World War II gentlemen that served, it's, I know Joe and I and Lou have walked with them and there's very few left. So it's, how would you go about recruiting more gentlemen from the latter wars afterwards to come and be part so that the children will see these veterans and, you know, what they've done for the country? How would you reach out and recruit them in or try to bring them to the parade?
Luckily outreach is something I'm really good at and I've been practiced at my whole working career since the military. And my experience with Corey over in Easton and the other jobs, you, you learn where to go. You got, you, you, you know, it's your connections again. You have to go to the VFW. You have to go to the Legion. Yeah, you, you find other organizations and while you're having people come in, you're always asking, hey, do you know another veteran in town that may need some help? Or, and then, or do you know any veteran in town that wants to be invited or, you know, let them? You, you have to always be looking, I believe. And then you also get, I don't hate to recruits, but you find people willing to do these along the way. You know, when you're doing the marker, obviously that's a military-connected family. Do you have any other military-connected people in town? Why don't you let them know if they ever need any help? When they come in for that help, be ready with a, you know, hey, there's a, there's something going on next month, next week. Do you want to help out? And then keep tabs. It's really good to keep tabs. And the follow-up is super important. You get a lot of, you get a lot of people when they know you're, you care and you know them by their first name and you say, hey, John, you going to help us out next week? And they will. And you get a lot of the younger vets along with the older ones. But I, and I do have a lot of connections still at the local universities and most of the town VSOs around here I've, I've worked with or they came through when I was working at Bridgewater. So, you know, so I definitely have a lot of resources. And when they find people from this town, they know if I were working and they would give me a call and say, hey, we got a, we got a person here. And then I would, again, do that same thing where, you know, bring them into the fold of what's going on.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I've got a couple of questions. And just looking on your, your resume and your time over at Bridgewater, which was, you know, a, a better length of time, you know, we're looking at six years that you've been there. And when I look at your, your job responsibilities in that timeframe, I don't know everything that you did there. My knowledge of the Veterans Office here, I look at that as maybe not the best qualifications for this role. But when I look at your duties in, to, as an assistant in Easton, it definitely, you know, is a big difference. But you've been in that position right about a year. So I look at that and I see what you've done here during that year. I'm going to ask questions that are a little bit different. Is, you're young, which is a great thing. You're, you're a veteran. You, you know the process. It's obvious you know structure here, but I want somebody that's going to deliver results for our veterans. So what do, what do you feel, I, I want you to tell me why I should hire you. This is a great resume, but what makes you different than anybody else we're going to talk to tonight? What is your vision for that office? Day one, what can I expect from you? What, what would be your plans? And why do you, I, I would guess I would ask the first question is, and these are all different, you know, we aim to ask the same questions of everybody, but everybody's background is different. What do you think this is going to be different or, you know, from where you are now, you know, to what you're going to have if we were to hire you? What's your vision of, of this office? And touch that and then as well as day one, right? Sean gets the handshake, the town manager says that's your office, he has your key. What do we expect from you?
So first, what, what's not shown on that Bridgewater part of, of my opus, because it's hard to put that on there, was those were the duties I was, that is assigned of that position, but essentially I did everything there. As in, sometimes you'd have to go get these, some of these kids to school. I call them kids, they're like 18 or 19, 21.
You can get away with that, I can't.
You know, they, you know, some, some of them have mental disorders in a, in a lot of ways. And so maybe work with them, not be in the office. You have, it, it was a lot more than, you know, I helped students get their benefits. It was, I sat in this, this veteran's truck because he felt overwhelmed coming into an office for, you know, a few weeks, a little bit every couple of days to make sure he filled that out in his truck because he didn't, he didn't feel good. There's a lot of that in there. But you did ask, what would I do on my, my first day? My first day, I would come in and immediately pick up the veterans on the Chapter 115 and make sure that, that paperwork and their stuff is set because you don't want them to lose. You don't want them to lose that money, especially if a lot of it goes to prescriptions or whatnot. While doing that, I would have to get my hands-on records and make sure they're up to date and constantly updating. Once you have the records and the veterans that need the immediate help, you know, taken care of, then, this is first, then I would reach out to the, the next level. Veterans that maybe needed a little bit of help or we know need help but haven't reached out, make those phone calls, make those in persons. And then while simultaneously, again, keeping an eye on veterans that need fuel assistance, it's starting to get cold out. And knowing the resources and bringing the paperwork to them to fill out so that they don't go a night with, you know, in the cold. That would be my, my first thing. And then expand the office with a lot of outreach. And again, grow, grow, you know, grow the office in that way.
Okay. You, you've talked about the services that are available to the veterans that we already know about.
Yeah.
How are you going to engage? Tell me some things that you'd like to do to engage people. You mentioned it and I agree. And we know, we all know, and especially, you know, myself, Mr. Gito, Mr. Carrera, been here a long time. We've all met a veteran in our town that won't talk. Okay? And they won't talk, but they need help. And you nailed it. You know, a lot of people are afraid to ask for help. You know, there's a lot of pride there as well. You know, a guy who was, you know, storming the beaches in Normandy isn't the first one that's going to come up and say he needs help. Just give me an idea of what you think you can do differently or, or what you would do, it wouldn't be differently, but what would you do to try and connect to people that may not even have been to the Veterans Office? You know, whether it be outreach on cable TV or if it be a mailing or, you know, meetings with the, the Veterans Clubs, you know? Just give me a little background on that.
So mailers are always great. You mail, like you said, you mail them out, but maybe something that has, you go to every or as many as you can, you know, veteran-oriented get-together in town. Sometime, or, you know, even reach out to other organizations that are going on. If you go to, sometimes the Chamber of Commerce has like a, like a lunch or a dinner or something, you want to go to wherever you're, wherever there's, you know, a group of townspeople and, and provide the resources there. That would be a good way to find veterans who aren't going through. But you have to listen to people. They, they, they know, if you knew a veteran that may need help and just give me their email or their phone or, or you say they might have problems with fuel, we have to, we have to know of these veterans first. And without someone coming to us or giving us the information or if they're home alone and we don't know nothing about them, it's hard. The mailer could work, but like you said, they might not fill it out. But we need a little bit of information, but we want to provide an environment which would allow it or make it easier for people to share if there's a veteran in need and maybe make that a message to say, if you know a veteran that might be in any need, want to try to get them to reach out or let us know and we can, we can reach out in a number of ways.
Okay. And, and just, and just to nail it down a little bit further, what do you feel you would do? Because you did mention about we would get information. Well, how do we get that information? So what would you do different or, you know, I shouldn't say different. When you come into a job, I, I'm, I'm always presenting myself to customers. I'm a consultant. So I'm always, you know, in an audience of a potential client. And I want to say to them basically, listen, I know your business, you need me, you just don't know it. This is what I know about your company. This is what I'm going to do. I'm going to be able to take this and improve it for you. So I'm going to vote on somebody to take this position. Give me that quick, hire me because this is what I'm going to do. You know, give me that. Why do you want this job? You've got a great job there, seems like you're doing very well there. What sets, why should I take you?
You should take me because I'm, I am one of these veteran, I'm a disabled veteran. You know, when I got out, I was, I hate to use, I was hobbled. I was still using these canes and this. I know, and I didn't ask for any help at first. I know how to get through to these veterans, how to find, find them. It's hard to say, you know, exactly right now, but I know through experience where, where they go. I know how to reach out and I've had experience doing that. And I know how to talk to them because they don't want you to, it seemed, in my experience, they don't want you to be angry, be angry or be angry with, even with them together. They want you to, to be there to say, I know you're upset and you know I, I'm here for you. And they'll, they will come. They will stop by.
You nailed it. Thank you.
Thank you.
You nailed it. Okay, great. So I apologize that I was a little longer than my peers.
No, it's okay.
But, you know, and I kept asking it and, you know, you knocked it right out of the ballpark for me. So great, that was awesome, awesome. So I'll actually ask the town manager, you know, it just, this position reports to you. Just like if anything, I, I think it would just be fair in the process if, if nobody disagrees, you know, disagrees with me or going to be reporting to the town manager. And anything you'd like to add that maybe Sean could respond?
Yeah. I, I just very briefly, and again, thank you for your service and, and your sacrifice, frankly. Just very quickly, one of the things that anybody who knows me knows that no matter what your role in this town, you're part of one team. And I have my team of directors and I serve the board and we collectively serve the public. And obviously, you know that in the role that you're in. What is your feeling and what has your interaction been as far as being? Obviously, you've been on military teams. How would you see that translating? Because a good military operation is a team. How would you see that translating to your role and how you would interact? How would you, what would you do to get to know the rest of our team when you came on board?
Well, I'd definitely introduce myself. And I would ask them questions about, you know, how do you feel about the veterans? You know, I would ask them, again, like I said, do you think there's any issues? Like any shortcomings with the Veterans Office? And then definitely take notes and remember and keep them as much as possible, become a resource to them also. Like you said, the military is a team. And teams that work well together get a lot done.
Good. Yeah, the book that sits on my desk, it's at home right now because I decided to reread it, is called The Mission, The Men and Me. And it sits on my desk because I believe that's how our workday goes. So I would certainly hope that what you've learned from the military, you would apply to that mission.
Yes, I would.
And the mission is Team Stoughton.
Great. Deborah, another question?
Yes. I thank you for your service again.
Thank you.
And I know you're a little nervous, but it's okay.
Thank you.
I have two questions. The first question is, what will you incorporate? How will you incorporate diversity and inclusion in the work that you do in the Veterans Department and Services? If you're given this position?
I would be deliberate in increasing diversity. It's hard, there's a little bit of difficulty when you, your pool of veterans is what's there. But I would strive to be as helpful as I can be, which is put all of me into the work with anybody, no matter what. But extra work into those veterans who aren't as represented all the time. And also keep track of the new research and seminars that keep coming out from new techniques to help with that. But I'm always striving to increase diversity wherever I am or, you know.
Thank you very much. The second question is, how, the budget for this department, let's say it's around $300,000, $400,000. How will you manage the budget in this department? This Veterans Services Department?
The best way is to be meticulous. Like I said at the very beginning, if you keep track of everything, make sure everything is approved in Chapter 115 area, you'll get the 75% back from the state. Now, a lot of people may fail in this, but I'm really good at record-keeping. I create databases. At BSU, they had a paper filing system for the hundreds and hundreds of veterans. My first month there, I scanned and created a database that kept running records on each student as they came. And you had a, perfect example, we had a student, three years stopped coming to school, came back and we had where he left off. We didn't have to ask for another document for him. He just, we had it right there for him. That's the best way of dealing with the budget, especially in this. Also, being mindful of any extra spending. You don't want to obviously go beyond that, keeping track of things. It's kind of my thing. Again, like the computer science guy in me doesn't let that go. And I'm very aware of the software and how to use it. But yeah, again, very meticulous with numbers and paperwork.
You nailed it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Yes.
Mr. Gito.
Do you know Mike?
I'm sorry, what?
Do you know our current Veterans Agent?
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear that last bit.
Do you know our current Veterans Agent?
I don't know him, but I know Corey might have known him. But besides that, I do not know him.
Would you? I guess something that I would have done if I were you would be to have a cup of coffee with the last guy that was here.
I'd love to, yeah.
And I was surprised that I didn't hear that.
I just haven't had the chance to have like a one-on-one with him, unfortunately.
Well, I mean, I was thinking the second day when you came in.
Oh, yeah, the second, yeah, the second day, yeah, of course. Any resource, especially someone that worked for this office for so long. I'd have my notebook, really about the notebook. And then take as many notes as I can. Contacts are really important. And never let a good resource like that, you know, go away without having a cup of coffee and learning everything I can.
Well, if there are no further questions?
I have one last one. Do you have any questions of us?
There's always a couple I would ask for this kind of position. I just want to add, the reason why there's so much time at the BSU and only the year at Easton was, that was deliberate. I went there to train for this job because this is the kind of job I decided, when my degree was done, this is what I want to do. So my time with Corey over there was not, you know, I also did the coffees, but it was to train for this position. So it wasn't, I wasn't just, you know, assisting him with this or that. It was, all right, you know, we're doing the 115, we're doing this, we're doing that. I just wanted to add that. But do you know how many veterans you have using Chapter 115?
I don't know that personally. Maybe the town manager have an idea?
It has dropped dramatically in the past few years. Do not have that on the top.
That's okay. Do you know, would you happen to know how many veterans have like? Do you know how many veterans you have in this?
I don't know how many he's serving right now. It's not that many. I keep wanting to say like 30 or 40 active, but that may be a little low.
Okay.
It's about 2,000 veterans.
Oh, come on.
But actively, yeah, but actively, actively using the chapter money.
But there is, you know, there's a lot to be said in that statement that we have 2,000 veterans in town.
2,000 veterans that know.
But that goes back to what can we expect from you? I want to hear you say something, which you did. And I've got this goofy way when I do these. I make little marks on a piece of paper. When there's something that's not that great, that doesn't really float my boat, I have that way of marking it. And the other ones are checkmarks. You count it and I'll just show it to you. I just want to show you this and I'd show if I did it again is I put a star here. All right? So it's, I view it differently. You know, I'm different. Everybody knows that on this board, I'm different. And I do have a different way of doing it. I put more weight in what you say that comes from here. And you've got the backup. I mean, you know, the experience, you know? You can say that, you know, a year would be a little nicer to have more, but you backed up your information, you know, and you answered the question. So it, that's why I think it's important for us to be able to answer questions of you because if you got an answer tonight, it may spur something that you want to add, you know? And it should be a two-way conversation. So if I hear, I don't hear any other questions, I'm going to.
It's okay. Any number we, town usually has, it's always off because you only know the veterans that come and let you know they're a veteran in town and are using benefits. And then of those, most of those aren't veterans. They're the spouses, military-connected. I'd just like to know.
Yeah. Shake the tree, see what else you can find out. Scott, you had a question?
I don't know if you know, but we actually have veteran housing in this town.
Really?
It's a big area. There's spot areas where they've been placed. They're also in the elderly housing areas. So there's quite a big area of veterans. And I was under the understanding, I thought it was 15, but 2,000, it probably is closer.
It's 57 active clients, though. So we have 2,000 veterans, but only 57 active clients in this past January. 20, almost 20 passed away the year before, though. So we went from 70 to 50.
That's common, you know, from these positions.
So you'll have a big area to, you know, reach out and talk to people. A lot of them, they're very reluctant to come in and stuff and.
That's why you got to go to them, you know?
Well, Mike's done a good job at meeting with them. And I know that he's well-liked. I'm just letting you know, there's a lot of stuff. It's not just sitting in that office. He's in, he's out, he's, you know what I mean?
I get it.
And to let you know how, if you were to get the job, how wonderful of an assistant you would have. Sharon Johnson just messaged me, 56 active. So Sharon, wherever you are watching, 56.
And that is?
She must be traded with Sue Herman. Yeah, she's working with Sue Herman too much.
And that's.
Don't you love my team? See, they're all right there for me.
And that's what, you know, when you think about, you know, when you're the appointing authority as well, is, you know, that I've heard many great things that Sharon's done. And, you know, she holds the office together, which is a good thing, too. But I'll tell you, we've got a couple of World War II guys you're going to meet. And they're going to tell you what you're going to do. So be ready for that. You know, you just sit there and listen.
They've earned that, right?
It's like, that's a big part of it.
Right.
You know, listening.
Great. So with that, it was, I hope I could speak for my colleagues. It was a pleasure to meet you here tonight. Thank you again for your service. And I don't think we have a timeframe. I'm hoping it's a pretty quick, we're able to do a very quick thing. But we will be back in touch and let you know either way. And, you know, if there's anything in the meantime, you have any questions, you can direct them through the town manager's office. And we'll be in touch, I guess.
Thank you. It was great to meet all of you.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Yes. Why don't we just take a five-minute break? That'll allow time for a little quick change and.
Sit in the front seat, please. Thank you. So I'm on the select board. And when my fellow board members, we were thinking about recruiting to fill the position, Director of Veterans Services, we developed a trait, a list of traits that we were looking for. And one was communication style, relevant experience, strategic process to grow the program, management style, that's people management, priorities, coachability, ramp-up time needed to add value to the role, technical skills, financial, accounting skills, fiduciary experience, contract knowledge, advocacy experience, working knowledge of Title 38, which is Veterans Benefits. And then other skills that the board believed were important for this role. We looked at your background and your resume and we were so very impressed. So today, our fellow board members will interview you, asking you a few questions. And then we'll just go from there. And then you have a time to ask us questions.
Okay, sounds good.
So we'll start to my left, Mr. Gito.
I read your resume. I looked at where you are employed. You've been there for a long time.
I have.
And have had a lot of different jobs. And it appears to me that you've done sort of soup to nuts in that organization. I was very impressed. I'll see if I can phrase this in a way that is clear. I come into your office and I ask you about having a grave marker. And you start to answer me. And it is apparent that I don't hear very well.
Okay.
What do you do?
Can you repeat that question?
Sure.
Thank you.
I come into your office and I ask you about a grave marker.
A grave marker?
A grave marker.
Okay.
And it's apparent that when you start to answer my question, that I don't hear very well.
Okay.
How do you react?
How do I react?
Sure. And what do you do?
Well, in that case, I would ask the individual that I'm working with, yourself or another veteran that's coming in, I would just say, you know, how are you doing today? Could you please repeat that? Let me get a little closer so that way you can hear the answers that you need better.
What follow-up would you do?
I would make sure that whoever I'm talking to understands exactly what I'm saying and what's needed in order to get the grave marker taken care of.
What would you do about my hearing?
What would I do about your hearing?
Sure.
I mean, I could ask you if you're, you know, connected with the VA or your primary care or, you know, if you need any medical assistance with that, you know? Do you wear hearing devices? You know, what's going on with that?
And I say, no, I don't have them.
Okay. And then I would say, is that something that you might want to, you want us to look into while you're here?
Thank you. That was very helpful. Let me go away and let somebody else ask questions.
Ms. Roberts?
Yes, I have two, I have two questions for you. How will you incorporate diversity and inclusion in the work that you do in the Veterans Department and Services?
Well, being that I work in New Bedford, it's kind of a well-diversified community. So I've been dealing with members of all different races, backgrounds, LGBT veterans. So myself, I'm half Cape Verdean, half Irish. So my family itself is kind of diverse in that nature. So that has never really been an issue for me, just because where I've been and how I've been raised. So that's not, that's not an issue.
Thank you. The second question is, how? The second question is, how, the budget for this department is around $300,000, $400,000. So how will you manage the budget?
Well, working with budgets of any type, especially in human services, having a knowledge of other agencies that can provide similar services and finances. So like, how I do things now is, if someone comes in looking for help for an apartment, I'll get connected with other agencies in the community that can offer some financial support. So instead of our agency bearing the hundred percent of the finances, maybe we can get another agency to do like security deposit, and then we can do first month's rent. So that way, we're able to provide the same services, but to utilize the funds in a better manner.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Kavy.
Once again, thank you for your service, and thank you very much for applying to this position. The question I have is related to the fact that this is a, this position is, will be a department head. Is a department head within the town. And I want, and so for that reason, you'll be leading a department. And my question really is to try to understand from you, if you don't mind describing your management style, and how you intend to use that for the benefit of the veterans in the town, as well as for the town as a whole.
That's a good question. So my management style, I like to incorporate like youth sports. So team player is how I approach management. So I will never ask someone that's working for me to do something that I wouldn't be willing to do myself. So even if there's a task that needs to be done, that isn't necessarily on something that I'm supposed to be doing, if I have the knowledge and the ability, then I'll help out. So it's kind of a team approach, like, I'm not above anyone, we're in this together. If things go well, everyone that works for me, I give them the credit. When things go wrong, that's when I take the credit as management and say, hey, I need to do better.
Thank you very, thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Scott.
How are you, Brian? Thank you for coming.
Thanks for having me.
A veteran comes to you and he's not able to secure a job, and he wants to stay in this town. And what would you do? How would you help him out?
Well, there's a few different programs right now for veterans for employment. There's a HVIP grant, that's a federal program that's, there's a few subcontractors that work in this area. So that's where they specialize. So they'll help out with resumes, they'll help out with job placement. So getting veterans connected with those people that specialize in that would be my first, would be my first task. You know, contacting people that, that's what they do. That's all they do. So being able to build networks in this area, that would be one of the first things that I would do. And if they can't get anywhere with them, obviously, I would have them come back to me. And then I would work with that veteran. You know, we can sit down, I'll do resume stuff. But if there's other, if there's other agencies that can manage that better or more efficient, then that's where I'll refer them to first.
Thank you.
I'll set you up. Okay. Thank you, Brian. Appreciate you coming here tonight. Really don't know where to start. You've got a lengthy resume here. I would imagine, you know, I say we joke around sometimes, and Stoughton's a pretty tough town. You know, we've got some tough veterans here, guys that really stand up for what they believe in. And I guess if you are hired, when you have a job, you always get what you're doing there, and people want to grow in positions. What could we expect from you if you are hired and you're working for the town manager? She's your direct supervisor when you're here. And what can we expect from you? Day one, what are we gonna see from you? What's your goals?
My goals day one would be to, you know, introduce myself to everyone that's working around, finding out what has worked in the past, what hasn't worked in the past, and trying to get an understanding of, you know, what the needs are in the area. You know, once I can establish that, find out exactly what the job specifics are that need to be mandatory. And then, once I have mastered those, look to advance to grow the program. So not only just what's the minimum requirement, you know, get a good grasp on that, and then expand it into the community. So I'm not sure how it's done in the past, but, you know, connecting with local schools around Veterans Day, trying to establish programs to bring students and veterans together, different initiatives like that. That's really where I'm passionate about, is, you know, getting into a position, and then when you leave, leave it where it's better than where you arrived. You know, that's one thing that I take, I take a lot of pride in my work, in working with vets and where I've worked, you know. They come from, they come from different areas. So being able to help them out, all of them, is really what I strive for. So whatever I can do to make it better, that's what I do. So, you know, eight years ago, we had a bad bed bug outbreak. And I was in there helping, helping the pest control people move beds. And I didn't have to do that. But that's where I'm passionate, is whatever the job entails, that's what I'm gonna do.
Okay. Well, information that was just brought, the town manager got an email, is we have roughly two thousand veterans in our town right now. And fifty-six are actively using the system, you know, for benefits, for their needs. How would you go after the remaining people?
To see if they need some services?
Yeah. And what would you do, knowing that there's two thousand people that are out there considered veterans, and only fifty-six people right now are using services? How would you take that? And what would you do? Knowing that information now, I know I'm catching you off guard.
Yeah.
But, you know, and I know as you think more about it, but just off the cuff, just give me an idea, you know?
Oh, there's different avenues. You could, you can, you can approach it from like a social media aspect. You know, start putting stuff on social media. You know, if anyone knows any veterans that might need services, you know, we're here, please reach out. You can ask the veterans that you're already receiving services from, if they have friends or people they know of. And then if you have a list and you have phone numbers, then you can always call and just touch base. Say, hey, listen, I'm a new Veterans Service Officer. I heard you're a veteran, thank you for your service. Just wondering if there's any, if there's any resources that we might be able to provide? Do you need anything? And just go from there.
Okay. Would that involve, I don't know if your relationships with the veterans clubs down in New Bedford? You know, we have some pretty active veterans here. And VFW, Amvitz, both have membership lodges. You know, would you engage those folks as well?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay. And I guess because a lot of my questions really through your credentials here have been answered, I'll ask the same question I asked before. I'm one of the votes, you know, that are gonna hire the person. Why should I hire you?
Well, you're gonna get someone that has experience in working with veterans, someone that's passionate, someone that takes this not only as a job, but it's my life. So I work, I might work at the Veterans Transition House, but the Veterans Transition House is my life. So that's what you're gonna get if you hire me. I'm a student, I'm a student, so I'm always learning, and I'm always looking to learn. I'm not one of those people that says, I know it all. You know, if I don't know something, I'll tell you, hey, I'm not sure. Let me ask some people, and I'll get back to you. There's nothing wrong with not knowing something. But not knowing and pretending you know, that's when you run into problems. So that's one of the things that I've learned along the way. There's no dumb answer, there's no dumb question. So you're gonna get a hard worker, you're gonna get someone that's dedicated, you're gonna get someone that wants to, wants to make the town of Stoughton a better place, you know? You want, I want veterans to say, you know what? They hired this new VSO, he's so good, you know, helped me out with this, he helped me out with that. That's what I take pride in. I take pride in providing top services wherever possible.
Good, very good answer. Thank you. So I will ask just my colleagues, any other questions? I'm sorry, before I do that, Madam Town Manager as well.
Welcome. Thank you for your service. And I, you sort of hit on my thing when you talked about your management style, about team. Everybody who knows me knows, the first day I came in here and I sat with my team, of which if you were hired, you would be a member of my cabinet or team, if you will, of directors. And for me, that's what it's all about. We are Team Stoughton, we are one team. What would you do initially? And you touched on it a little bit in one of your answers. What would you do initially to become a member of my team?
I'd bring you coffee and donuts.
Oh, coffee, man. I could not tell if coffee was the answer, by the way.
That's good.
And I will tell you, the ironic part of it, I gotta tell you a quick story. The ironic part about that is the very first staff meeting I had, apparently the town manager before me used to, or a town manager in the past, used to buy donuts. And ironically, the veterans agent, Mr. Bizarra, is the first one who busted my chops, who said, what do you mean, you have a staff meeting and you don't bring coffee and donuts? So you really forget, you should be the town manager then, because apparently that's what's expected by the VSO of the town manager. And that's important to me, that, and my directors all work together. We are not siloed. Every department is connected in one way or another. How do you see yourself as connected within my Team Stoughton?
Like I alluded to before, I mean, I have a lot of other skills, not only just dealing with veterans. So whatever the team would need, you know, I'm pretty IT savvy. I've learned to build computers, I run a lot of different softwares. So I have a lot of different information. I might not be a professional in all aspects, but, so if like, a team member needed something and I had the ability to help them, I'd say, hey, listen, I know about that, I can give you a hand with that. That's basically how, that's how I do things, you know? I was talked to from, we had a new CEO probably like eight years ago, and he came in, he's like, Brian, we gotta cut back on some of your duties, you're doing too much over here. And I was, and when he told me that at first, I'm like, I felt like, I felt like I was being punished. But he's like, no, listen, we gotta be able to, you know, we gotta be able to maximize you, but we don't want you to burn out. But that's just the type of person I am. I'm willing to do whatever it takes to help out whoever, anytime of day or night, you know?
The book that normally sits on my desk and it's at home because I'm rereading is called The Mission, The Men and Me. And it was written by a special forces guy. And so for me, if you're gonna successfully work for me, that's the mindset you have to have, The Mission, The Men and Me, in that order. And we are Team Stoughton, that is the mission. I serve them, but we serve the public collectively.
Exactly. It's, I mean, basically it's the Bill Belichick way. You know, and that's what I tell, I do a lot of coaching, and that's what I try to leave with the kids. Like, listen, I know you might wanna play shortstop. Coach needs you in the outfield. This kid can hit the ball, you know? The team needs you. And that's, and as funny as it sounds, I take that into my day-to-day life.
I use Belichick all the time, and I'm not a Patriots fan. I'm saying that on TV? I didn't say that. But his leadership style is phenomenal, and obviously he gets it done. So that's not, it's not a crazy metaphor to me, so.
Okay. So the last, unless anybody else has any, last one, Mr. Gito, question?
You've had a lot of experience in the, in the house that you're working in, that transition. Do you have knowledge of what the veterans agent in New Bedford does? Do you know the tasks that he does, how he does business? I mean, there's a lot of laws that have to be followed, procedures that have to be followed. You'll come into the office, and there'll be a pile of things on your desk. Would you know how to handle them?
Initially, probably not. I have a general idea. You know, I deal with a lot of veterans, that we refer to the veteran agent for like Chapter 115, emergency funding. So I have a really good idea, as far as, in particular, every case is different. So like, to determine eligibility, it's basically either ninety days of active service or one hundred and eighty days. And that's gonna all depend on if they're activated or if they were National Guard. So there's a lot of finite detail to the Chapter 115 law. But I don't think it's anything that, that I can't learn and learn pretty fast.
Do you have any people that you could call to get advice from and assistance?
Like other Veterans Service Offices?
Yes.
Yes, I do.
That's a good thing.
Anytime you work in social services, you need to be really, really good at networking because, you know, you might have funding for services at one point, you might lose funding. And knowing other agencies that offer those same services, it becomes crucial in being able to get things done.
Thank you.
Okay, anybody else, any last questions? My last one is, do you have any questions of us?
Maybe just some like HR questions. I don't know if you'd want those done now, or, you know, if...
No, I think that it'll be done at a later time. Yeah.
Okay.
And then, yeah, you talk to the town manager, she can direct you to our HR people or whatever.
Okay.
No questions on the job responsibilities? Are you very clear of everything here? Okay, great. All right, well, thank you very much for joining us tonight.
All right.
The town manager's gonna give you her card. And, you know, the old analogy, we'll be in touch.
All right. Appreciate your time, everyone.
Thank you very much for being here. And with that, we will take another five minutes. And Ms. LeBlanc will send a text. So we will see, you'll be back in five minutes.
I can butcher a name. Hi, how are you?
Hi, good. How are you?
I'm doing pretty good. My name is Deborah Roberts. I'm on the Select Board. And when my colleagues and I, we thought about the straight, the traits that were needed to fill the Veterans Service Position. We talked about communication style, relevant experience, strategic process to grow the program, management style, that's people management, priorities, coachability, a ramp-up time needed to add value to the role, technical skills, financial accounting skills, fiduciary experience, contract knowledge, advocacy experience, a working knowledge of Title 38, which is the Veterans Benefits, and then any other skill that they personally believe was relevant to the role. So we saw your resume and it's very impressive, but could you tell us a little bit about yourself? Keep it in mind what we thought some of the traits would be. Thank you.
Well, first, I wanna thank everyone for the opportunity to sit here before you all and answer that question. I spent, let's see, 21 years in the Coast Guard, retired as an E-7 Independent Duty Corpsman. They're now known as Health Services Technicians. That experience there, as a medevac corpsman, not only did I bring health care and benefits to the active duty population, but also to their families, I also provided them education into looking to the future. I provided, whether it was the units I was at or on a larger scale with COLO, at Kating Units, not just the Coast Guard, but any service, the importance of seeking those benefits sooner than later through the Department of Veterans Affairs. I think my career gave me that ability to learn how to adapt, overcome, shift priorities, multitask, and prioritize that which was important, and be able to shift my priorities, not just in patient care, but also medical administration, helping out with billing for medical care that they sought through contracts, as well as family members through TRICARE. I think that also helped me with my next venture, which in 2007, I was hired by the Department of Veterans Affairs. I started out as a Veteran Service Representative in pre-development, basically taking those claims and developing claims and communicating with veterans and their families, because it's not just the veterans that we're looking at, we're also looking at their family members, to ensure that we got the right evidence to get them the benefits that they were seeking. And in those times when you have to say no to do so in a, in a respectful and polite way, the VA has not always had a history of doing that. They've not always had a good history of even saying, yes, we're giving you benefits. There's been a lot of change that has taken place in the 14 and a half years I've been there. I didn't stay just as a VSR. I also did a stint as a Rating Specialist where I took the 38 CFR Part III and Part IV to apply those laws to the benefits that a veteran was due, as well as communicate to the medical community what we needed. Oftentimes, you know, it's, it's, it's sometimes not just getting the evidence from the veteran and putting that claim in and then crossing your fingers and hoping that everything works out. It's also making sure that the medical community does what we need them to do without us doing it for them. So a lot of education with the doctors, and now we do a lot of contracting, to educate them on how to complete the documents we need so that there isn't a delay to the claim, and how to work that, I like to call it the politics of it, without letting your ego get in the way. I also worked on the post side of VSR, which is taking what the pre-development did, what the raider did, and then tying it all together to make sure that we did what we were supposed to do for the veteran, and process that award, make sure the award is correct, and then communicate the findings to the veteran or their families. On a fiduciary side of things, I have helped, oh, I don't keep count anymore, whether it's veterans or family members that need help managing their money. The way the VA looks at fiduciary is really, it's, it's a clear-cut question, can you manage your funds? And it's not just based solely on a medical professional or the court saying yes or no, it's looking at the totality of the evidence. I mean, I've had veterans call me up and say, look, there's nothing wrong with me. I just got too much on my plate. I can't manage another thing. Can you get somebody to manage my money so I don't do something dumb? That's enough for us to say, wow, they're reaching out, they want help, what can I do to help them? I also was in quality assurance, which is taking the work that we do as a VA to make sure that we're doing it correctly, to make sure that we're doing it properly, and if not, what do we need to do to correct that? What do we need to do to make it better? If, if we as an organization are not constantly looking at the work that we're doing to try to better it, even if we think it's perfect, I think that's where sometimes mistakes can get made, and you can slip up in what you're doing and it's easy to fall backwards. From there, all along, from probably 2009, 10 to current day today, I have always been involved in mentoring and educating the new employee so that they become the best that they can be. I did something kinda, I guess, out of the box, you know, I'm, I'm on that, as you wanna call it, with the VA, pretty much, you know, I'm not starting my career with the VA, I'm kind of on that, as they call it, the back nine. I took an offer to go to become a training consultant with the VA. So the official title is Claims Examiner. My job now is to, I, I work actually in a program, it's called the WarTech Program, Warrior Transition Program, where we take transitioning veterans, a lot of them who have gone through medical boards have some significant medical issues, but they can still work and they wanna work and they wanna help veterans. I currently train and educate them on how to do the job. Currently, it's in a virtual environment, which, if you would've mentioned the virtual to the VA like 18 months ago, that actually, it was mentioned and they went, huh? So we took a program that didn't exist, and we're starting our fifth session November 1st. In between all that, I am on a variety of teams where we are working at revamping the entire VA system, really. Our training is revamping, our M21-1 manual, which is for the public to see, has gone through a major reorganization. This past summer, we had over 300 changes to that manual. It's constantly changing because it's a live manual, so what you read today can change. Look at it on Friday, it'll, it'll change, because every Friday they put out changes. The 38 CFR Part IV, which is the rating schedule, that, you know, veterans are very well aware of it because it's available to them, that has gone through a major overhaul, the first major overhaul since 1946. There's another major overhaul coming to it for both the respiratory conditions and the other one slips my mind, genitourinary, I believe. That takes place in November. So there's a lot of modernization coming to the VA that's been long overdue, and it's a positive thing because in that positive change, it reflects to the veteran. So I've always stayed well-rounded in my ability to help veterans, and I strongly, like, my job is, is, has always been present and will continue in my work with veterans to be centered around, and I tell this to students every time, if it wasn't for this 38 CFR Code of Regulation, none of us would have a job with veterans, and that's 3.159, which is our duty to assist. And that duty to assist, I always believe, is, is, is a two-way street of communication. It is what can I do for them and what can they do? And if I need to hold their hand and help them along, no problem, all in, but what can they do to help them also in helping us? Because there are some things that we will tell them, hey, we're gonna do this, we're gonna do that, we're gonna get this. But there are other things that we communicate to them that say, hey, you're seeing a private doctor? We'll do what we can to help you out, but you also need to help us out by facilitating getting those records in the event they tell us no. You would think that private doctors don't say no? They do. And that makes, that, that makes our job a little bit more difficult. And sometimes that's when, you know, I get to roll up my sleeves and say, all right, great, this is, this is awesome. So, you know, throughout my career, both military and, and working for the government in a civilian capacity, I have, I have been involved with helping veterans. Sometimes I wonder if I help veterans more or their family more, and sometimes it, it equals out. I have, I mean, gosh, we could sit here all night and next week with stories of, of things that I've done and helped other people do. And, and you know, till the day, gosh, until the day I probably stop breathing, if I have a chance to help a veteran, I'm gonna help a veteran. This is an opportunity, I, I look at this opportunity because I'm kind of in a, in a transition with everything that's going on. My, my daughter had our first grandson, so my wife and I are, are back up in this area, and I'm, I'm like, you know, an opportunity came up. Actually, I was pretty surprised when I got the, when I got the email. I looked at it and went, oh, wow, I actually thought that Stoughton forgot about all of this. So I was very grateful for the opportunity, and I, my fiscal responsibility in, in the VA, I was out of the budget world. That's for much, you know, Secretary of the VA and the politicians. But in my military career, I operated on a zero-based budget. If, if they asked me, what is it that you need? How much do you need? And I told them, hey, I need, I don't know, I, I need $500,000 to run for the fiscal year. If they said for quarter one, we're gonna give you X amount of dollars, my job and my marching orders were, you don't spend over that, and it'd be nice if you didn't spend under it, but if there's, we always had this carryover period. But when we hit the fourth quarter, it's always good to spend what you got because it made it difficult to go to the president and say, hey, this corpsman down at Woods Hole needs $500,000, but he only spent $100,000. That doesn't help out with the work that we have to do. So I've, I've always lived by that. I don't believe in spending over means. I believe in documenting every little thing that I do, and if I don't know it, in fact, I, I did a conference, I, I'm in a three-day conference, teaching public health officers, doctors, nurses, how we do exams. The big thing that they, they, you know, they, and they'll fire off some interesting questions. If I don't know it, I'm not making it up. I'll go find the answer. I'll look it up. I'm extremely good at using my resources. I, I was, I was telling somebody today, I don't even know how we got on it, but I said, look, I'm, I'm good at what I do, but I also know my limits, and I know how to use resources, and I know how to reach out to other people and say, hey, how does this work? What's, what's, what's gonna work? What doesn't work? How can we improve it? A lot of the work that I've been doing over the last four years, specifically, specifically the last probably year and a half, almost two years, has been a, a big team concept. And intertwined with that team concept, my boss loves to say, are you busy? And that usually means he's got something that he's gonna drop on me to say, can you fit this in? And, I don't know, my, my dad gave me a work ethic that says, if you can do it, do it, and do it to the best of your ability. You know, and, and that, that's, that's my career in a brief second. I haven't been busy at all.
Okay, on the questioning, let's start over in this end. Scott.
David, thank you for coming, and thank you for the years of service that you've put in.
You're welcome.
And still putting in. Our town is big on Veterans Parades, and I don't know if you've had any experience in putting on parades, but they're really into their veterans. They wanna see them, they wanna thank them, they, it's Veterans Day and Memorial Day are the, the two big things. Would you be able to bring that out and, and continue it on?
I, I think so. I've, I've not ever put on my own parade except with, you know, the kids when they were younger and that, and, but as far as have I ever put on a Veterans Day Parade or a Memorial Day Parade? No, I have not. Have I been involved in some? Yes, as a veteran, and, and, you know, I, I had a friend who was very big in, in doing them, and I used to, you know, help him out down in Belmont. He has since passed away, but I've, I was very involved with the Belmont, we had a coffee hour on Saturdays, and I, I used to sit there and say, do you have any other guest speakers? Because I, I happen to be the, the guest speaker every Saturday, so I'd have to always come up with, gosh, what am I gonna talk to him about today? So I've, I've helped more of a, like a behind-the-scenes guy, but is it something that I think I could take on and, and continue on in the fashion that Stoughton has done? I believe so.
A veteran comes to you and he's, he's a little withdrawn, having a tough time, you know, getting a job, like, he, he just doesn't have the motivation, doesn't, can't land it. How would you help him?
I'd have to, I'd have to see where he's really at. What's, what's hindering him from going forward? Is it, is it mental? Is it physical disabilities? Is it just not knowing what to do or where to go with it? Some of the resources that would be available are, the, the VA does have a phenomenal, Boston VA system is, is simply... VA system is, is simply phenomenal, both their, their social work department, their mental health department, also within the VA on the benefit side of things, our employment specialists, which is how I got into the VA. If it wasn't for that, if it wasn't for Volk Rehab, I would have never even, I wasn't, like, working for the VA wasn't even on my radar. So for me, I would definitely look into those opportunities for that veteran, but it's, it's easy to say, hey, here, let me throw all this at you without knowing, what is it that the veteran really wants? A lot of times, it's really just sitting down and saying, hey, what's, what's going on? And, and based on that allows you to know what direction to go into. And, and it doesn't matter the age of the veteran. The one thing about the VA is we, we don't play the age game. I mean, that veteran could be 90 years old saying, I can't get a job and I feel I can still work. What's keeping you from working? Well, my back that's service-connected is out of whack. My knee has to be replaced again. Okay, have you ever thought about individual unemployability? And a lot of folks, even that work in the VA, don't understand that individual unemployability is a benefit. There's no age attached to it. You can be 120 and get individual unemployability. You know, has the veteran taken the opportunity to meet with the Volk Rehab people because maybe he just got service-connected or he, she just got service-connected? And they look at it and say, wow, that's great, I'm service-connected at 50%. I can't do anything anymore, I'm broken. But if they get into Volk Rehab and get the counseling that they need to point them in, okay, you can't be a construction guy anymore because your back's messed up, or, you know, yes ma'am, you had a great military career, but maybe the medical world isn't going to work for you because you've seen one too many things, but we can point you in this direction and you need some education. It comes at a free price. That's how I got my master's degree. I mean, all that stuff was, you would think with the knowledge I had as a corpsman in the military and all the training and educating I did, my, my story was, it's good for you to do it. I'm perfectly okay, I'll do it on my own. And it was by sheer, I was that veteran that said, man, what the heck is going on? And it was the VA that pretty much said, hey, we got this for you and oh, by the way, do you want to have an interview for a job? And I, I would take those things I learned and use them in the same scenarios that, or situations that fit that.
Excellent. Thank you.
Steve.
So we've been asked, and I think it's responsible to ask each candidate the same questions. I do have an additional question for you, but it's more of a clarifying one. I just want to understand location. It seems like you, you've been with the VA, working with them for about 14 years and most of that time you were, you were stationed in Providence, Rhode Island.
Yes.
And then March 20th, just as COVID-19 swept the nation, you relocated to, to the DC area.
Yeah, that was by political force.
Okay.
The job that was offered to me was originally, I remember it as if it was yesterday. So are you okay with working from home five days a week and when you have to go teach, just getting on a plane? And they, they actually looked it up and said, you can fly out of Boston? I said, yeah, no problem. It's an hour away. Because I, I, at that time, lived on the Cape.
Yeah.
Currently, I'm down in Duxbury. Currently. I'm planning on that being longer than current. And then they announced in, at the height of COVID, yeah, we had a change of heart, you need to be down here in the DC area. And unfortunately, I wasn't, we used to be allowed to say, well, that's within three months. No, I'll keep the job I had in the VA. They, they came up with this new law that basically if you refuse, you're out of job. And, yeah, that wasn't the time to step away from a job.
Yeah, fair enough.
So, yeah.
So, but, but currently, you're in the Massachusetts general area.
I am, yes.
Okay. That was the main thing. And it sounds like you have a lot of connections here, family and so on. Okay, so the, the question I did have though, is that this particular position is department head. And for that reason, I want to understand a little bit about your management style. So if you could just detail that and how you think that will benefits, benefit the veterans of the town as well as the, the town as a whole.
Um, I'm a people guy, so I, I, throughout my time in, in, I mean, the military, I've been there, done that, did it as far as managing and, and being the head honcho. I always believed in an open-door policy. I always believed in, you know, it's a two-way street in communication as well as respect. And I do my best not to make, actually, when I start my day, I take my ego, open the back door and say, go on out and play. When I get done working, I'll come and call you and you can come back and join me. Too often in, in the work that we do, it's very easy to become judgmental. It's very easy to look at a veteran's situation and say, how can you have that going on? Because I went through the same thing and that didn't happen to me. The education that I provide to new employees now is, you need to keep the ego out of the work and you need to approach it with neutrality. What, what goes on with one person can be totally different on how another person goes on with it. We see this especially with, with those veterans who, who experience PTSD. They can go through hell and back again and then have a successful career for 20 years and then one day, the light switch doesn't go on. And it's our responsibility to be there, no matter what role we're in, to be there when the veteran needs us. I have a coworker of mine who reminded me of this. I don't know, he's been in the papers and everything, marathon runner and he did 22 push-ups for the 22 veterans who commit suicide and how do we, how do we stop that? So my management style is, is, is people-oriented. I, I love teamwork. I love working with, with, I, I can work with just about anybody. I, even, I mean, we all work with people that you look and have a tough time with, but I've worked with the greatest of people and I've worked with people that others just didn't want to work with and I figure, well, it's not a big deal to me. We have a job to do, let's, let's do it. I don't, I don't believe in coming, I don't believe in being fake. I don't, I don't, I, I will say one thing, I don't believe in, in being, getting political. One of the great, one of the best Secretary of the VAs we had, gosh, if you ever called him secretary, he'd get up and walk out and say, man, I am not, I am not this and that. And he made it very clear to us as, as an organization, as well as to, you know, the upper echelon, I am not a Republican, I'm not a Democrat, I'm not an independent. I'm Secretary of the VA for the veterans. And that's the approach that I've, I've used since the day I started with the VA. I, I, there's, because the veteran doesn't need, that's not what the veteran's looking for. That's not what I, I think the department is, is about. It's, there are those that need to be that way. I just never found the, the need to be that way. Could I be that way? Sure. But I've not ever found that need in the work that I've done. And I've done a lot of public contact outreach with, with veterans. Like, first day on the job, phone rang, my buddy picked it up, he looked at me and said, wow, this guy's saying he wants to kill himself, what do we do? And we talked him through it on the phone and the guy's, you know, successful, I think he wanted to be a magician and he's a successful magician in the Northeast somewhere. And that was 14 and a half years ago. So, you know, that's not the time for politics, that's the time for listening and buttoning the mouth up and speaking very slowly. And that, that's kind of how I've, I've approached the work that I, I continue to do, whether I'm training, whether I'm educating. I mean, I'm educating doctors that know all this stuff, I'm telling them and the questions they ask me, oh, would you love to walk in my shoes for the next two days? I, I don't look at it as, as, you know, they're above me, below me, we're on an equal playing ground, learning together. When I work with veterans and I work with other people in a, in a management way, it's not that I'm teaching them strictly, I'm also learning from them. Because the day I stop learning this job is the day that, that it's time for me to go to a mountain and sit in a rocking chair and enjoy the sunset.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Ms. Roberts.
Yes, Mr. Solby, I have two questions for you. The first question is, how will you incorporate diversity and inclusion in the work that you do in the Veterans Department and Services?
Everybody's equal. I, I look at everybody and treat everyone in the same way that I would hope I would be treated with respect, you know, the golden, the golden rule. Treat others as you would want to treat yourself. I've, I've lived by that. I don't have a checklist for veterans when it, when they come and need help, regardless of what it is, regardless of what their gender, background. The rating schedule that we put out does not say you have to be this in order to get this. We look at it and say, what does the evidence say? How does it apply to the law? And if, if everything matches up, here you go. And, and I will continue to live by that.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
My second question is, the budget for the department is around $300,000, $400,000. So how will you manage the budget?
Um, we will not go over $300,000 or $400,000 ever. If there's ever that possibility or inkling or thought of that, I would imagine that would not be a decision totally made by me. I would imagine I would have to justify why and then the, the financial and town manager and, and you all will get together and decide to say yea or nay. But I believe that a budget of any kind, I would stick by, if, if you tell me I have $300,000 to spend, I would look and see where that gets divided up and where the priorities are for that and make sure that documentation, whether it's by computer, a, a ledger, is properly done. The i's are dotted and the t's are crossed. But I don't, I don't believe in, I'm not a fan of taking the people's money and fruit, like crazily spending it in ways that it doesn't need to be spent. I, I mean, my wife and I do our budget, we're debt-free. If, if I, if I didn't feel like working anymore, we could, we could like go tra, well, no, you can't travel the world right now, but we, we could go camping in the middle of the desert for the next 30 years and not have to worry. And we are by now, no means am I like one of these 1% millionaire people. We just, I, I've, I've had financial people say, look, you would have perfect 1,000% credit if you just go like get some debt. I said, why? I, I haven't been in debt in, I mean, I don't owe a credit card, a mortgage, I don't, I don't owe anybody anything. So I would operate a budget with that mindset. I don't, I don't want, you know, the money's for the veterans, the money goes to the veterans. And if it's 300,000, then it's 300,000. If you tell me it's 500,000, it'll be 500,000. If you tell me it's 100,000, it'll be 100,000. We'll figure it out and make it work. I can get pretty crafty with stretching a dollar. My wife was a good teacher.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Mr. Gito.
You have a very impressive resume. You obviously know how the VA works and what you can do, what you can't do, what you can provide for people. The questions that I would have asked you have been asked. I won't take up your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Well, it's, this doesn't happen often, I'm at a loss of words. And my colleagues will back that up. You gave me a glimpse into who you are, which is very difficult to do at times when people talk about themselves and, you know, they feel like you're patting yourself on the back and so forth, but I feel that I already know what I can expect from you in the job, you know, by what you've done. So I have no questions. All I would say is, thank you very much. Thank you for your service, you know, to our country, to our veterans. And what I will do is recognize the town manager for a question.
The question I have, and, and given your military service, the concept of team should be very comfortable for you, being a member of a team. What would you do, and for me, it's a critical issue in running the operations of the town. What would you do initially when you came here to become a member of my immediate team? As a director, you would be in sort of my cabinet group.
I would ask, what hasn't worked? Because I'd want to know. And, you know, if, if everything has worked perfectly to your expectations, the town's expectations, that's awesome. But I'd want to know what, what hasn't worked. Once I know what hasn't worked, I'd want to know what does work. I'm a firm believer that if, if, you know, the wheel is turning beautifully, don't mess with it. Fine-tune it, but don't mess with it. I mean, why? I, I've had plenty of people in my, gosh, they're like, let's do this, this, this. I said, well, what's wrong with it? Nothing. And why do we want to put the time and energy into doing that when we can put it into something different? I, I think coming into something brand new, yeah, I'd want to know what are, what are, what are, what's working, what isn't working, what, what is your vision? My vision can be one thing, but what is everyone else's vision? If, if the town has a vision of, we want the wall to be a bright yellow, and my vision is, well, blue works better for me, there's a disconnect. And if there's a disconnect, eh, it, it makes it a little bit more difficult to get things done. And I, I'm not one that's afraid to roll my sleeves up and get dirty in work, but at the same time, if things are rolling along nicely, not to say that ignore it, because if you ignore it, well, the wheel gets out of balance. And if the wheel continues to get out of balance, it's, it's going to set things in motion to, to like a domino effect. So those are, those are the first two things I'd want to know is, you know, what works, what doesn't work.
With that, any last questions of anyone before we move on? Last question, do you have any questions of us?
Um, gosh, that was the question. I wanted to know what, what works and what doesn't work. You know, other, other than that, most of the questions that I usually ask are, are those, those HR things, you know? How does vacation work, leave, you know, all that stuff? But as far as questions about the job, no. I, I think those would come later on, but as far as, as today, no. I'm, I'm just thankful for the opportunity to sit and, anytime I get to put education out there on what the VA's doing, I, I like it anyway because it's, it's, regardless of who you pick, it's information that you can take and by all means, whoever it is, have them contact me. I, I help veterans agents all over the place that call me from, and because we're electronic now, I get calls from, name a state, I, I get a call from somebody. Just because I'm in a training environment doesn't mean that I still don't reach out. You know, the, the guys in Belmont still reach out to me to say, hey, we need this, we need that, we need this, what do we do? I'm, I'm one that, that, that's the part of the job I like. A lot of, a lot of the stuff that I do now, I have to, I really have to work hard at staying out of that, the, the current political atmosphere of today. I do pretty good at it too, which is good, because I like to get down to the root, the root of things and that's currently making sure that people that are coming into the VA get educated properly so that they can do what I would like them to do, be better than me. Because if they're better than me, then the organization improves. And something to just keep in mind for your veterans in the town, there are three new presumptives that just came out, especially for your Gulf War veterans, so you want to make sure you get that word out so they can get it in, because the VA's hiring a ton of people. So if anybody's looking for a job, look on USA Jobs. They're hiring up to 2,000 people this upcoming fiscal year, probably more than that. Yeah. I mean, if I can educate people, awesome. Have a great day then.
And if I, well, a question did pop into my head when you were talking about something and a simple thing where a veteran has documented military service and is, I guess, from what I'm told, is entitled to an ID card. I'm told, is entitled to an ID card that documents that he's a veteran.
An ID card through the VA?
Yeah, through a VA or anything that says, "Yes, I'm a veteran." You know, "I served in."
If they take their DD-214 to the VA Medical Center, they can start the process. What the VA Medical Center needs is, the DD-214 is designed to make sure that they have honorable service. So it either has to be honorable service or a general discharge. If it's other than honorable, then we have to stop and there's like administrative paperwork we have to do. And we basically make an administrative decision to determine if what happened in the military, if we can overlook it and say, "You're honorable for VA purposes." Sometimes even if that doesn't happen, we can, if they have disabilities, make a decision where we say, "Okay, those disabilities aren't going to get compensated for, but we're going to allow you to get treatment through the VA." And again, a lot of that depends. We've changed a little bit on that. We used to be pretty hardcore with, if it's not honorable or general, then hmm, not happening. So, yeah, they would go through the medical center for that.
Great. There was an issue that popped up in town and I guess it was a problem getting a rock-solid answer. It sounds like we just got it.
Usually, what happens on the VA benefits side of things, if they go into the benefits side of things, we don't give out any specific ID card. The ID card they're talking about, actually, the ID card they're talking about is, it's kind of a nice, they actually have a newer one and I haven't gotten it yet. I want one because it's kind of cool. The ID card they're talking about is one that, I don't even know where mine is anymore. Gosh, that would be bad. Ah, there it is. This basically just says VA. And it entitles you to, and what they use that for is, you know, the basic information for entitlement. Because based on your percentage lets you know where in the pecking order you can get your care and how much of it. VA medical care, for the most part, for your disability, is free. However, if you're 10% for hearing loss, okay, you can go get your hearing loss and it's covered. But if you go to like, "I want to get a physical," they may require a offset payment through your insurance. And that's on their side of things, not on the benefit side of things. The higher up your percentage goes, once you hit like 50% and above, pretty much tip of your head to the tip of your toes, except for dental, is covered through the VA. So it's, they have like eight stages of where you fit. And then spouses, it depends on what's going on. But generally for veterans, they're entitled to an ID card and they don't have to be service-connected for anything. They just need that DD-214. Yeah, without the DD-214, if they walk in, what the hospital does is they send us a document saying, "Hey, can you do this?" And if we have the information for us, we can send it to them. If we don't, then we have to go, you know, down to, well, it depends on the time they came in service, we go hunting it down. But it makes it easy for the veteran to have it with them. Yeah.
Thank you very much.
You're very welcome.
Any other questions? Hear none? An extreme pleasure to learn a little of what you do and the wealth of information you have.
Yes. Yeah, there's a lot of changes coming on down the pipe for the VA and how we do business. And like I say, I get the information out to, I saw somebody in the street a couple months ago. And I went out just to say, "Hey, what's up?" And they were talking and talking and they said, "What do you do? Why aren't you at work?" And I said, "I work from home." "What do you do that you work from home?" I said, "Ah, I'm a Department of Veterans Affairs. My dad's a veteran." I said, "Well, let me tell you what you need to do if he hasn't put in a claim." So I just enjoy it because, you know, it's a benefit that's there. And if Abraham Lincoln didn't want the benefit there, he wouldn't have created it. So I figure I have the opportunity to, you know, continue doing the work I loved doing when I was in the military. And that's helping people.
Outstanding. Thank you very much.
Pleasure.
It was a pleasure to meet you.
Have a great evening.
Same to you.
Enjoy the rest of the week.
Thank you.
Bye now.
All right. Okay. And actually, I think we'll take another five minutes and regroup. We'll get this done and we will move on to our consent agenda. So, great. Okay, I think we have enough time passed that we should be visible and people can hear us. So we will get back to our agenda. We have now the consent agenda. Item A is the payroll and bill warrants and any other documents to come before the board. Item B, to approve invoice number 15 and the amount of $21,049 for disbursement to be made from the CPA housing account under the COVID-19 Emergency Housing Relief Fund. Item C, nominate two select board members for the Stoughton Equal Opportunity Committee. Item D is to authorize the town manager to sign the restrictive covenant for the EDA grant for the South Stoughton Sewer Extension Pump Station project. And item E is to approve the open session minutes of 10:05, 2021. Would anyone like to pull any of these items?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Roberts?
Number 10, C, because I would like to nominate myself to be on the SEOC.
Okay. Well, let's go with, I just want to go through, does anyone want to pull any other item on the consent agenda? Okay, hearing none. So Ms. Roberts, on item C, please.
I would like to nominate myself to be on the SEOC committee, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
It's not required, but I will second that.
Okay. All right. And we'll be nominating two. Is anybody else interested in serving on the committee?
I'll nominate Mr. Cave.
Okay, I'll second that.
I'll accept the nomination. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Any other nominations? All right. So I will, on the nominations, I will call for a vote for the appointment of Ms. Roberts and Mr. Cave to the Stoughton Equal Opportunity Committee. On the vote, Mr. Carrara?
Yes.
Mr. Cave?
Yes.
Ms. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Gito?
Yes.
And the chair votes in favor. On the remaining items on the consent agenda, items A, B, D, and E, is there a motion to be made?
Motion to approve Consent Agenda items A, B, D, and E.
Okay. Motion made by Steve Cave and second by Scott Carrara on the Consent Agenda items A, B, D, and E. On the vote, Mr. Gito?
Yes.
Ms. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Cave?
Yes.
Mr. Carrara?
Yes.
Chair votes in favor. I will entertain a motion to go into executive session for approval of executive session minutes of 10:05, 2021 and discuss town manager performance goals for FY 2022. Is there a motion to be made?
So made.
Motion made. Is there a second?
Second.
Questions?
I will not be attending.
Okay. All right. For the record, please let it be recorded that Selectman Carrara will not be going into executive session with us. Are you going to go in for the first section or are you just going to, okay, so he will not be coming in. So we will go into executive session. We will not come back into open session. We'll adjourn our meeting from executive session. So, good night, everybody. Thank you for joining us. Be safe.
Aye.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, Mr. Gito, I'll call for the vote. Yes, to go into executive session. Mr. Gito said aye?
He did.
Ms. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Cave?
Yes.
Mr. Carrara?
No.
Mr. Carrara will not be going to executive session. The chair votes yes. Sorry for that. Good night.